Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 21st. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being live streamed on YouTube and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. Our first item of business is the opportunity for public comment. So is there anybody in attendance who has a question or a comment for the staff and board that is about a subject that is not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir, at the back of the guy with the hat? If you would, might come another to the microphone and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Chris Zeller. I live on Phoenixville Pike 1101, and it's in reference to speeding on that road, excessive speeding now that it's been paved and especially with the heavy trucks that are coming down through there more so. The eighteen-wheelers, which I'm just kind of concerned on the blind spots, speed of forty-five miles an hour, and you have where it's at, we drove going up towards President meeting church, and it's really like blind areas that we are coming up over that road. We also have residential on the opposite side, which I'm speaking for them also, where at forty-five miles an hour apparently. It was changed back in 1977, which was, I spoke with the project supervisor who is doing this, he gave, Saunders, all the way around there, and he had mentioned to bring this no issue to the township. And I actually spoke with Officer Julio, and he also said, just to break open the issue of this speed. Now, the cars, you know, they, you know, obviously, you know, they gave shorter distance of getting up a stop, an eighteen-wheeler going by there at forty-five, fifty miles an hour, it has a greater distance. And I've got to say, I've actually got a couple of videos of Wawa gasoline truck coming up through that area there and then going on, making a left onto Green Hill to the Wawa there on Route 100, which that's hazardous, which really should have just been clogged all the way down to Route 100 and then all to the right and up through the Secretary Hill to there. But, you know, that's, that's just one of many of trucks that I've seen coming through there. He was not speeding, but a lot of them are, you know, doing well, forty-five miles an hour if not better. You know, just trying to figure, you know, I don't know whether or not the speed limit can be decreased, but I just figured I'd bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a minute. So when you spoke with Officer Julio, did he say that there's, have they done, because he's with our traffic safety department and the police?
Yes.
Did he say that they've been looking at speeding on that road? Because they often do speed monitoring on some of these roads.
Well, he said for me to come in here and break open this issue on this area, and if you were to, I guess, make the next step of doing what you just mentioned there.
Are the board comments questions?
So Phoenixville Pike is a state road. The township doesn't set the speed limits on state roads. We'd probably have to make a request to Pendott to do a study to see if there should be any sort of adjustment to the speed limit. Is that correct, Chief?
Which we're happy to do.
The township is responsible for enforcing the speed limit.
Correct.
So, you know, you can contact the Traffic Safety Unit, Sergeant Ressler is ahead of that, and express to them your concerns. We also have Traffic Safety Committee meetings as well, where you can come to attend. You don't have to wait for that to happen, bring up your issues here. You just contact Sergeant Ressler.
Yeah, because I just figured, you know, that mentioning it to him, you know, about this situation, and then also Matthew Anderson, who's the project manager, he actually said that it was the township who regulates the speed limits on that road. They're the only ones, and they just take care of the maintenance on the road.
So we, when he says regulate, we, our police department does do enforcement of the speed limits, but we don't set any kind of the speed, any of the speed limits. I just looked in our ordinance, and there are no state roads listed for the speed limits in our code of ordinances. Those are all handled by the state. So we can make, I'm happy, like Ms. Gagnon said, I am happy to make the request either myself or through our police department, either through the chief or Sergeant Gricer. We can certainly ask that they do a speed study and report back.
That'd be great. I really appreciate that.
I should bring it out.
I have no idea. I told me, you know, that it was actually, you know, the township who regulated, you know, they're the ones that put up the speed limits, you know, before that, and all they did was they did the maintenance and took care of it. Apparently, he took over the road about twelve, fourteen years ago, assuming, I think that's what he said.
Phoenixville Pike is going to stay road forever.
Really?
Yep. But Pendott is more than happy to shift responsibility over to the municipality.
It's kind of fight, because there's a number of people, it's bothering back and forth. So, okay, well, I appreciate your time.
Chris, could you just spell your last name for the record, please?
Yes, Zeller, C.E.L.L.E.R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with a question this evening? Mr. Stephen Stolines?
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Stephen Lyons, Save Forsyth Farm. We are a community grassroots organization that is focused on preventing demolition or development of any kind on this historic eight-and-a-half parcel acre of land, 905 West Town Road. I do want to acknowledge that the township had taken a step forward in trying to address this issue with the conservatorship that's been approved by the judge. However, we have numerous questions, one of them being the 351-page petition document that illustrates a legacy of 23 years of financial, highly questionable financial practices by one Joseph Kravitz, and who's responsible for that oversight, not only at the township level, but at the county level and the state level. He's operating in multiple townships, East Town, West Town, West Ocean, two different township, Chester County, Delaware County, and Montgomery County. We're concerned that there has been a history, some kind of history going on with this property prior to this administration, and I want to applaud this administration for trying to take productive steps forward. We are very concerned that there is an attitude of immediate demolition. I've been looking at the paperwork here, starting in 347. Estimates, Phase One, initial site security, $5,000. Installation of security fencing, $25,000. Engineer site review inspections, $10,000. And then temporary bridge repair, shoring, $25,000, coming to $65,000 for these assessments done by BDP, Carl Ewald's company. The category also lists in Phase Two, demolition of main house, $205,000. Demolition of barn structure, $45,000. Demolition debris removal, $15,000. Contingency, $30,000, coming to a total of $360,000. So this is a trend towards a demolition posture, which we oppose. Just by the way, how many folks here with Save Forsyth Farm, please raise your hand? Thank you. Our group is growing, and we hope to continue productive discussions. This is a complicated issue, we understand, but the history here is extensive, and there are other townships that are doing amazing work, finding creative solutions to balance open space and historic preservations. Now, there are a lot of opportunities for us to collaborate together. So with that said, I'll end my comments here. We do have a litany of questions, but this is a complicated problem. Let's work together.
Do you have a specific question tonight, Stephen?
Yeah, who's responsible for the oversight of Joe Kravitz? And was there anyone else prior to 2017 involved in backdoor negotiations on this property?
I can't speak to pre-2017, none of the board members were here, so I don't have any knowledge of what interactions there were with the township at that time. And you're well aware, because we're attendants at these meetings, how we've managed this situation with respect to appointment of a conservator, so.
What is the view on historic preservation in our township which dates back to 1704?
Well, we'd like, we'd like our property owners to maintain their properties, but they also have the right to do what they can, what they have for their property as a property owner. You know, we don't have a ordinance that prevents demolition of properties. And this is a blinding property, there's a public safety risk, and that is what has driven the board here to move forward with the conservatorship. You attended the hearing, you saw, we had a public meeting where you were present, we had a whole full discussion around whether we should go in that direction.
Yeah, I was saying that the township needs to be more intimately involved in finding a solution, since Joe Kravitz, who was a creative problem creator, has created a twenty-three-year-old problem, which we now as a community have to fix, because this history is too important.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a public comment? Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up, yes. Yes? Actually, I meant you, but it's okay, come on, you're first. If you please state your name, please, to the record.
Donna Kravitz. I just wanted to know from all of you sitting here today, has anyone ever visited this property personally, any?
I have not been on the property.
This is private property, we're not listed for trespassing. We could be arrested for that.
Okay, would you like to come down to the bottom of the driveway of the property to visit?
Our zoning officer has been out there and documented it numerous times and testified for it.
It's an absolutely beautiful property, absolutely beautiful, and every time we come to this meeting, I see everybody sitting here almost rolling their eyes looking, and I don't understand why everyone's so angered. It's a beautiful location, it would be a beautiful park, it would be a beautiful historic site, and it would be a pride to have in West Ocean.
Well, thank you for your comment. We have discussed acquiring that property, we had an appraisal done, and the purchase price would be at least $2 million plus cost, and renovation of that property is TBD with respect to the actual cost. We hope when we have the structural report done, why the conservator will understand the amount of money it would take to preserve that property. If you could find, if the Save Forsyth Farms could find someone willing to purchase the property and renovate it, we'd be delighted.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else with a question? Madam, you had your hand up, do you want to?
Well, Stephen wants to say something. I'm Diane Snyder, S-N-Y-D-E-R. I live on Falcon Lane, at the very bottom of Falcon Lane. I've lived there for forty-five-plus years. I am very disappointed right now with all the answers we get from the board, that, oh, we can't do this, and we can't do that, it's private, and I understand that. But I just went to, it was called Chester County Planning Commission meeting on November 12th. It was a deep dive into how to have open space happen. I didn't know whether anybody on the board has been there or spoken to them. All the townships around us are looking at, they look at flood zones, open space, making history heritage sites, making it a very positive, people want to move in there, into the area because of it. I haven't found that happening with us. Mr. Kravitz has, he hasn't really had a good record for going for ecology. He couldn't care less whether it floods us out or not. And it's, I have here, I'd like to see open space, the floodplains looked at, the historical, and I get concerned sometimes listening to him at these legal issues. I think sometimes he stretches what I call the truth. And I've seen even the township going, I like, I didn't remember him coming and doing that. There's a problem, a real problem. I was a teacher, and I so would love to see that as a historical heritage site, a place where you could take schoolchildren and have them investigate the flora and fauna. It is something that I think would be a very positive issue with West Ocean Township. I have been very upset with the township supervisors. I wasn't before. In fact, when you put the pumping station across, I hadn't had a flooded basement, and all of a sudden my basement's flooding because the groundwater system started coming up. I had to get pumps in my basement to keep the water out. Something's wrong. I came to the township about it, and to be honest, I felt like I was being treated like a dumb old lady.
That's not acceptable.
I am not a dumb lady, believe me. I have more knowledge.
Stephen, Stephen, please, let the ladies speak.
I'm so upset, I'm sorry.
And I, I'm just very, I'm just upset with the board. I think it's, go to this commission, go find out what they're doing. They are finding ways to help fund and help keep our history alive. I grew up in the 60s, and I saw many things that happened in the 60s, and we don't want that happening again. We want to keep this historical site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Is there anyone else wanting to make a call in?
Sal. Would you mind calling Sal? Sal DePrisco, I guess 1133 Pottstown Pike, West Chester. I didn't come here specifically for this reason, but I figured while I was here. I was kind of curious of basically the results, if you will, the numbers, rate of return, if you will, on the solar PD system now that it's up and running, it's been up for a while. Specifically, what did taxpayers pay, ad hoc, township pay? What's our, what's our rate of payment to PICO as a price per kilowatt hour? And what's this, how's this system performing as in, you know, predicted kilowatt hours per year? Do we know those numbers at all? And I'm suggesting, if you don't, just to give you the numbers.
We can give you the numbers. Off the top of my head, I don't have them. Everything came in line, the cost of construction came in line, we got an extra rebate from PICO, we're submitting for our PICO one-off payment, where we reduce the consumption on the site, by obviously the amount, the design amount, or a couple of little problems to start with, but I think it was great.
Mike, not to put you on the spot, but you told me yesterday the bills are down significantly.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, what the, do we know if we made ad hoc, if you will, so to speak?
Yeah, it was, the whole business case is available online, Sal.
Yeah, no, I know, I was just, it was, it was kind of off the tough questions, I'm not here to.
$484,000 for construction, roughly $31,000 for engineering, I want to say.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear first number, what was?
$484,000 for construction, there were no change orders.
Okay, four eighty, and then, so that's, that was the, that was the taxpayers' bills, roughly a little over $500,000. So, yeah, just.
Well, remember, we get a credit as well from federal government.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm saying, what's the net ad hoc?
Oh, the net will be 30% less than that.
Okay, fine.
And also, additionally, we'll be getting a PICO incentive as well.
Okay, do you know what that's based on?
Yeah, it was a fix, like 10 cents per, it was a little bit out for certain period of time.
That's dependent on three months of inverted down, which we're in the process of accumulating now.
And do you have any, does anybody know what the price per kilowatt hour the township pays?
Yeah, we do, but off the top of our heads.
Off the top of our head, yeah, but I was, I tried to read the screen, but my eyes aren't good enough anymore. I know it's, there's production up there, I just can't read it from the phone. Do you know what the predicted annual kilowatts per, per house per year was produced?
I mean, it was rated to produce, I think, 267 kilowatts, that crack might be.
26,000.
26,000, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if I can get the numbers, I can give you the, I can give you the email address, the same one you guys will be able to.
Sal, I have your email, I'll be, I like that project, I will email the business case to the ladies.
Why I addressed the question specifically?
You can put me down for an action.
Okay, so that's, it was an easy one for this time.
Yeah, that was good, thank you.
We'll see you, we'll see you later in the discussion, though. Thank you.
All right, anyone else with a question for the board? Margie?
Hi, good evening, Margie Swart. Just an observation on the gentleman that spoke of the speed on Phoenixville Pike. It just reminded me, or came to mind, that I'm surprised that the Greystone residence of 589 new residents of Greystone.
598.
598, what did I say? Nine something, 598. Paying these additional 80 to $120,000 in neighborhood improvement district fees on top of their home, that.
I don't think it was that much.
Well, from townhomes up to the estates. If they paid upfront, maybe not, they saved 30 or 40,000 in interest, but those that are on a 30-year incorporated it into their mortgage, I believe, are incurring that extra expense, but.
But it's not extra in the sense that it was a neighborhood improvement district, all the infrastructure was bought by the new residents and not burdened the rest of the residents of the township.
Well, I just want to point out that Phoenixville Pike, the improvements at Phoenixville Pike and Green Hill Road, and also the intersection of the bypass and Phoenixville Road, all those improved improvements, and maybe even the paving that Pendott is doing now, those costs were attributed, I believe, to the neighborhood improvement district. So I just find it curious that Pendott was able to squeeze in improvement costs into the neighborhood improvement district.
That's, that's not accurate at all.
That's not accurate representation of what happened. The developer, when you get the plan approved, as part of the conditional use requirement, there were certain traffic improvements that their traffic expert recommended had to happen, had to occur to mitigate the traffic impact from the 598 new homes. And that was something that the developer represented to the township that needed to be done, and the township imposed those as conditions, conditional use approval, and then the developer becomes responsible to do that. How the developer chose to pay for it through the NID was something that is allowed by state law, and the owners of that development, the people that bought homes in that development were going to pay it one way or the other, whether it was going to be through the cost of their house and their lot, which would have gone higher if they didn't have the NID assessment, or it's in the NID assessment, they're going to be ones that were paying for it one way or the other. Okay, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I know those costs were included in the NID fees. And then also, I just wanted to do a follow-up, or ask follow-up on, in February of this year, the board approved a salary, an update to our 2015 salary and employee classification schedule. I believe the consultant delivered her report to the board in May. That report was discussed in executive session, never in a public setting, which I believe violates the sunshine law. So I'm just curious when the board is going to release that, not just to the residents, but also to the employees. Think the employees need to know if they're being paid fairly, if they're being classified fairly, so just if you could provide an update on that, I'd appreciate it.
I think you're mischaracterizing what that work was. It was not specifically a salary study comparing salaries with other neighboring municipalities or Chester County, it was really an observation and analysis of our current practices, our categories of pay within the township, and also kind of suggestions on how to manage things like performance pay, inflation adjustments, et cetera. So it was a work in progress that the board reviewed, with some specific ideas that we didn't all agree on in terms of a way forward. So at this point, in fact, at the next meeting, we're going to continue the discussion around how to work further with the consultant to actually complete that work, but it's not a salary study in the context of what you seem to think it is, Margie.
Okay, so were the findings of that report, that study, used in the formation of the budget that's being presented tonight? I saw that there is a copulation of percentages as far as pay increase.
They were not.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number four, presentation of the 2026 General Fund, Sewer Fund, Wasterecycling Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, and Highway Aid Fund budgets, an approval to advertise with the intent to adopt the 2026 budgets at the December 16th, 2025 meeting. I believe Christine is going to talk to that. Give me a minute, I need to pull up my own set of documentation. All right, Christine.
Okay, I don't know if you guys want to just go fund by funds with questions, if you don't need to go through the slides. Presentation's the same format as we've had in the years past, so.
Well, let's just take it fund by funds, just go through all the slides for the general fund, and then we'll stop and review both the revenue expense information you presented and see what questions we have and what anyone in attendance has.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
I have one here. Okay, so the first slide that we have is just some highlights across all of the funds presented within the budget. Most notable are, we're not looking for a tax rate increase, an increase to our sewer or trash fees for 2026. The salary and wage increases about, averaged about 4.4% for non-uniform and 4.96% for uniform. We've made some personnel adjustments through 2025, which will be visualized in the 2026 budget. We've eliminated some positions and consolidated some things. The MMO increase this year is smaller than we've seen in years past, and that's just based on the funding status and actuarial evaluations. And then, as in years past, we're proposing to fund all of the major capital expenditures, including, you know, major stormwater projects and things like that, out of the Capital Reserve Fund. And then, as in previous years, we're proposing a transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Reserve Fund, as well as from the Sewer Fund to the Sewer Reserve Fund to fund some of those capital projects. Does anybody have any questions on this slide?
Well, just like to emphasize, we got nine projects in the books, or working on the books, you know, for storm work, so we are proactively dealing with that issue, and that will continue as we go along.
Oh, there's some questions, hang on a minute, Christine, so, Margie, you had your hand up on, you have a question?
Yeah, so just explain to me, the salary and wage increase, 4.4, that doesn't mean every non-uniform employee is getting a 4.4. How does it determine what wage increase they're getting? Who determines that?
Well, uniform is contract. Well, uniform is contract, this is contract.
I understand that, I'm asking about non-uniform.
Non-uniform is set by me based on a, based on the existing policy that's in there, based on performance reviews.
But the existing policy is from two thousand and fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, and it moves, it adjusts based on inflation, and there are adjustments in those ranges each year. And people move up through a thirty-year progression, Margie, you have all of this information. It move up through a thirty-year progression, and in that progression, they move up based on a percentage each year. Some people get more, some people get less, and it's all based on performance.
Okay, I won't, I won't go on about it, but you said it, it increases every year, but if I ask for, if I ask you, send me, or email me the most recent salary and wage schedule, I'm still getting the one from two thousand and fifteen.
That's not accurate, I provided you with the wage schedule showing the different categories, the midpoints of each category, the policy for how those categories run through, I believe the last time I gave it to you was what was provided for the two thousand and twenty-five budget.
Categories or factors?
Each position within the township is in a category, there's a span of nine categories. Each employee's position is put into one of those categories. That's based on the two thousand and fifteen study. Those categories then get adjusted based on the June thirtieth CPI for the Mid-Atlantic region. And as people move through a thirty-year progression, they move up through those categories.
That's fair enough, I'm saying, it's not an itemized salary for, not, you know, names taken out of the X number of, uh, people that are being paid, just give an itemized, a list of what each salary is, is that correct?
That's correct, it's based on the position and the category.
Okay, so if we were to, if, if we were to just ask, okay, here's X number of people that are being paid, can we see the actual salaries being paid, so that we can see where it, where it breaks down, mean, median, those kind of things, is that something that's available?
Mean, median, if, if that record exists, yeah, I mean, we have records of what every person is paid within this organization.
Right, is that something that's, that's publicly available in?
It would be available through a right-to-know request.
Okay, all right, yeah, fair enough. Okay, thank you.
So did anyone else have a question on this slide, Christine?
Uh, Sean, will the township consider any allocation of funds towards a historic preservation initiative?
So you're, you're suggesting that, you're requesting that we should have in our budget some kind of a item to overload the space fund?
Rather, if the township can identify a historic asset worth elevating to a heritage site status, would the township consider allocating funds or partnering with the community of funds towards a historic regulation slash open space initiative?
Well, I haven't given any thought to this point, I don't think any of the other board members have. It means something we would need to talk with staff and, uh, so let's throw about what kind of process we needed to do that. I mean, we have a lot of priorities when it comes to our, uh, funds that we have, um, so we just have to see, but we hear your suggestion.
Yeah, you wouldn't be alone in the process, you have a whole community and grant opportunities available.
Thank you, you comment? Margie?
One last comment, on the two million, uh, the second and last bullet, uh, proposed transfer from general to capital reserve fund. Um, I'm wondering if you can reconsider that, because we did transfer from the general fund five million dollars this year, two thousand and twenty-five, and, um, what we projected to spend in that capital reserve fund, uh, was under what we had planned by five million dollars. So our capital reserve fund, my research may correctly, is around nine million, so why did we need to transfer this?
So let's hold the question, because when Christine gets to the capital reserve fund, you'll see how, although we budgeted to expand those funds this year, a lot of those projects, this expansion is going to fall into twenty-six. So it will deplete, the capital reserve fund will fall even with this transfer in twenty-six, so just hold the question. Anyone else with a question on this general slide? Okay, Christine, I think we're ready for the next slide, thank you.
Okay, and this one is just, um, comparison of our revenues over the last several years, um, what we're projecting for two thousand and twenty-five and, um, requesting for two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, I think just one point on that slide I'd like to make is our projected revenue for twenty-five is higher than our projected revenue for twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
So would you explain why that is?
Yeah, um, if we actually go to the next slide, I have a lot of the information on that, on this slide. Um, so the big piece of that is, in two thousand and twenty-five, we're really coming to the conclusion of the woodlands development. Um, I believe all of those permits are just about done, Shelby Headset today. Um, and there's very few of the original five hundred and ninety-eight homes remaining to be sold. Um, we're a little over, what?
Just to, just to add on to what Christine said, there are two lots left in Greystone left to be permitted.
Yeah, so we're, we've really finally hit that point that we've been talking about over the last, last several budget years. Um, with Woodlands wrapping up, we're going to see some of those things start to decline. Um, for transfer tax in particular, um, we've been budgeting higher the last several years because we've had the sale, um, of the land itself to the developers that we've been recognizing revenue for, plus the homes themselves, as they've been completed and purchased. Um, so it's additional, you know, revenue that we're not really going to see going forward. You know, there will be some, you know, general resales as people who have built those, um, you know, homes decide to sell them, things like that. So we do have, I do have that worked in there a little bit for some resales, but the big chunk of the sale volume that we've been experiencing is going to really decline, um, moving forward. So that's part of it, and building permits is, is another part of that, with all of those lots pretty much done at this point, building permit revenue is going to go down significantly, too.
Kind of expand on what Christine was saying. So roughly, with the reduction in transfer tax revenue and the reduction in building permit fee revenue, that's a projected reduction of five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the township's revenue stream, which is a little less than half of the deficit between the projected actual revenue for two thousand and twenty-five and the budgeted revenue for two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you.
And then another part of that is, is obviously interest rates, um, you know. Our rates are still holding normal at this point with the adjustments that have already been made, but we're expecting some additional reductions moving forward, so we're inevitably going to start realizing at least somewhat of a, of an interest rate reduction moving forward.
Thank you.
Good question, Christine. So for two thousand and twenty-five, uh, you must have actual transfers of dollars, and then twenty, twenty-six, what are the differences?
For transfer tax?
Yeah.
Um, give me one second. So for transfer tax, I'm anticipating just over a million dollars, um, for twenty twenty-six, yes.
And what was, by at least to date?
Um, I don't have what it is year-to-date in front of me, but I'm projecting about one point six million, just shy of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on revenues and general fund?
I can just ask a question, I'm not looking for an answer, it's just a generic question, something we need to take a look at. Just looking at the future, looking five years, ten years down the road, uh, this past three or four years that we've just, we've had some significant revenue that came in, which is only like a one-deal shot. We're not going to be seeing that again in the future. But just for us to take a look at, um, sustainable expenditures and given our revenues, like some kind of assessment as to where we may be further down the road. Under some factors are, you know, you can't really figure out, for example, grant, I don't know being awarded, but, um, just looking at our, our income tax and others, that are more stable, get a better idea of what would be a sustainable budget going into the future, years ahead.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, um, especially, you know, it should be a lot easier to trend at this point, because the big problem with woodlands is, you know, we can only guess at how quickly they're going to, you know, sell and build and permit and things like that. So once that's done, we'll, we'll be, be able to trend a lot of those factors a lot better.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to expenses. I'm sorry, because.
This is just a comparison between the two thousand and twenty-five budget and the two thousand and twenty-six budget, which highlights the changes in each of the categories, um, for the revenues. And you can just see the ones that we talked about have the higher decrease percentages, so.
What's intergovernmental, what's intergovernmental revenue?
Um, that is revenue that we receive such as, um, like our state-aid pension, um, and, you know, our foreign fire insurance that, you know, pass through, passes through us to the fire companies, um, yeah, those sort of things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just for the record, what are enabling taxes?
Um, enabling taxes are, you know, our transfer tax, our earned income tax, local service taxes.
With real estate taxes on that first line, that's a combination of what?
Just strictly real estate taxes, so that's current year, um, our delinquents and, um, interrupts that are billed out for improvements that are done mid-year after the main tax rules have gone down.
Does it include transfer taxes?
No, transfer tax is part of the enabling taxes.
It would just be great in future years if you do break out that enabling tax. I know if you scroll down, it's broken out later, but it's kind of confusing. Because real estate taxes, I always kind of think that's a transfer tax as well, because it's a real estate tax, right?
So what's the enabling tax, transfer taxes and those?
Earned income tax and local service tax.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on revenues? Okay, next slide, please.
So same slide as we've saw with the revenues, um, this is just a comparison of our expenses over the last several years and what we're projecting for twenty-five and twenty-six.
And again, Christine, the twenty-five projected to the twenty-six budget shows a decrease, is, is that primarily because of all our transfers to the capital reserve fund?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. Next slide.
So this slide just highlights some of our, um, main changes, um, from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six. Um, you'll see noted in here the increased, um, expense for the fire and EMS contributions, um, some of the road projects that we have, um, and things like that. Does anyone have any questions on anything specifically?
Any board questions on it?
I got at least one, but I was going to read to the bottom of some.
Let's see if there's board, I mean, what, oh, you said board.
Okay, Sal. Um, I just, but it's a sore subject for me. IT services, is everything still subscription-based with the township between own or attempt to own anything?
Some things we do own, but most things are trans, are switching over to subscription-based. We just had that with Microsoft, um, we have to transition everybody to a subscription plan, that they don't do the licenses the same way that they used to. Um, so, uh, mo, most things are, are unfortunately gone, just subscription-based.
But both three, uh, what's, uh, what zoning, or what, why, why the decrease of, why the decrease, what's going on there?
The project's almost done.
Yeah, so the township, the township, the board approved the proposal, Gilmore and Associates, to do a comprehensive update to the township's zoning ordinance. That started in two thousand and twenty-four, it's going to be completed soon, so that expense is coming off.
Christine, how much are we budgeting for the American two-fifth celebration?
Give me one second, I can, uh, tell you that. I think it's thirty, but I just want to check before I miss.
I think, now you've told us that you share this, that there's equivalent contribution plan from East Goshen.
Correct.
Yes. Um, thirty thousand is what we have in the budget for that currently.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone with questions? Doug? Doug, can you speak up, please?
Yes, uh, on Sal's question about the IT services, does the town, and you're saying that the computer programs are going to subscription services? Is that for Microsoft Office that we use?
Yes.
Is there any consideration in using the free services that are compatible, such as the Ray Office or Open Office, that have no subscription service, that are fully compatible?
Not that I know of, um, I don't know, you know, some of our uses are com, pretty complex, I don't know, like a free version would.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't use a free version for security purposes.
Other questions? Here, go to the next slide, then.
Okay, and again, this is just a comparison of, um, two thousand and twenty-five budgeted expenses versus two thousand and twenty-six budgeted expenses.
Questions on this slide, just to roll up the, some of the detail.
The decrease percent change for the administration between the twenty-five, twenty-six budgets is negative, so decreased eight point eight seven percent. Is that primarily because of consolidation of, uh, goals within the, uh, within the administration?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So people are working more efficiently.
I hope so.
Okay, good to hear.
Any other question? Doug?
Uh, Christine, for the library expenses, uh, when they did their presentation, they requested no, no additional funds, is that what this reflects?
Yes, it, the, um, budget currently reflects the same dollar value for the library as two thousand and twenty-five.
So Doug, that's a question I, if you, do you attend the meeting where we had a discussion with the library, and I indicated I would like to raise that topic with the board at this meeting when the budget was presented? Uh, because I would actually like to see a raise, uh, in what we donate to the public library, as I suggested. So I'd like, like to get through all the slides, and then we'll see what issues the board has that they want to discuss. Okay. General fund revenue expenses, are any other questions on it?
Yeah, this is the last slide for general fund.
I just want to go to, point out something I think's already been alluded to by, uh, by John, is that, you know, our projection for the general fund revenue and expenses is basically in line, slight surplus with the general fund excluding the transfer to the capital reserve. So we have a two million dollar transfer planned of, for, uh, the capital reserve for unallocated use, and we have half a million for debt service for the municipal complex. So as we've discussed on the revenues, we're forecasting a declining revenues going forward. Our expenses will probably be, you know, inflation kind of adjusted. So we're going to end up in a position, potentially in a year or two, where our revenue is not sufficient to enable continuing transfers to the capital reserve fund. And we have a lot of things we want to fix in this township with regard to infrastructure, and we'll talk about some of those projects in a little bit when we get to the capital reserve. And even with all the good work that the public works team does in perspective, replacing Stormwater Pike and House, and not using contractors and costs that come with that, there is substantial, uh, amount of work that we're not capable of doing in-house, such as pipelining, and that is expensive work. So we have a, uh, capital investment plan over the next ten years to deal with these stormwater infrastructure issues that will need continuing funding. So although we've been in the fortunate position of having, been able to accumulate some capital reserve money because of the reasons that we described, the one-off of Woodlands, higher interest rates, grants that we've received, the, uh, money from the federal government, those things have dried up. So we're going to have to understand how we fund our continuing needs from a capital perspective, when at the moment we're in balance between revenue and expenses. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that that is something the board will have to do, address over the next year or two. All right, so.
I have a thing on that slide, that operating transfer, I just want to note that although township only budgeted, well, only, the three point seven, down to the bottom, three point seven million transfer, um, it was actually five point seven.
Yes, this is a budget to budget comparison, we had enough service in the general fund that we transferred more than that, and that decision was made, occurred in April.
Correct, and even though revenues are going down next year, and the budgeted go down next year, we were one million dollars over budget this year.
Yes. Because of all those lots that were sold in Woodlands, right, Margie? All right, next slide.
Okay, so for the sewer fund, um, this is a little more consolidated than the, the other funds. So we have the, um, comparison of previous years, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, and then some just highlights, um, on the sewer, um, rates, we're not seeking an increase for two thousand and twenty-six. We're not seeking an increase for 2026. Not many changes to the revenue side. Again, we talked about interest rates already. We're going to see that same decline across all of the funds, so you'll see that noted. And then, as we discussed with Woodlands, on the sewer side of that, that's the connection fees. So, you know, now that all of those homes are permitted out and things like that, we're going to see a decrease in connection fees because everybody's already connected, so.
Okay. Next slide.
And then expenses, again, comparisons and some key highlights. I'll note the transfer to the sewer reserve fund for the sewer authority. We have netted that amount out to utilize the interest that has been earned in the sewer reserve fund and bring that balance in the sewer reserve fund down a little lower to be in line with the debt payments for the sewer authority bond moving forward. So the transfer here is a little less because it's incorporating some of that fund balance, but we will be transferring 2.25 from the sewer reserve fund to the sewer authority as we've done this year as well.
Sounds good.
I have a question. I noticed it's been pretty consistent up until 2024 as far as the expenses, but then we go to a little over a million dollar jump in 25 projected throughout and move forward. What is majority of that? Is that like the magnetite or, you know, as far as actual?
Part of that is the transfer. We did increase the transfer from the township to the sewer authority. I believe that was, we increased it for 2025.
Close to a million.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So it's part of it, yeah.
I thought so, but I just want to confirm that.
Yeah.
So do you think my majority of it, because I know like the magnetite's going up and there's other things.
I do, I think the majority of what you're saying there.
I can tell you for sure in one second.
Okay.
Give me one second to get to that page and I'll tell you for sure.
Yeah, I think it was close to a million.
Yeah, we only transferred 1.25 million to the authority in.
In the past.
Yeah, in the past. So we increased it for 25 and 26, $5 million.
I thought so, it's hard to confirm it.
Okay, thanks.
So just to point out on that, so this is a fund that is more easy, I guess, to project the revenues and expenses for, because it's a totally fee-based fund. And we've managed this so that we have a surplus available to transfer to the sewer authority, because the sewer authority is what manages the capital assets. So they're doing the investment in the actual physical infrastructure of this treatment plant and the collection system. And it's almost probably, all you know, we have had a almost 10-year investment program now of substantially upgrading that aging infrastructure to the point where we have a, what I believe is a very modernized, well-functioning, good system that benefits not only the West Ocean residents, but the surrounding municipalities that we have agreements with. And I want to give some credit to Mike, an author for the sustained effort of work that he and his team have done.
I think we spent about 37 million over the past 10 years to operate that to state of the art and with our leaders, I think that helped a lot. So thank you.
All right.
Yeah, 10 years ago, they basically didn't help design the plant, so it was needed.
Very interesting.
All that infrastructure upgrades are done, we're definitely.
Any questions on sewer fund from anyone? All right, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, waste and recycling. No major changes here. We're not requesting a rate increase. We took one for 2025 and we're expecting interest to decline here as well. This fund balance has been declining through the contract term, but that contract will be out for bid in 2026, so, well, 2026 will need some adjustments, but.
When we put it out to bid, does the township, the person, the township citizen get to go to the board and ask, say, go twice a week for collection?
That's a good question. So if you remember my newsletter article about three months ago, I suggested in '26 we were doing a survey of all the residents who were interested in responding to, we would get a bid document that would break out the choice between twice a week pickup or once a month full pickup, and we would see what responses were with people's satisfaction, either with the status quo at a higher cost or with reduced service of potentially some lower cost, and we'll see what the response is.
Unfortunately, most people won't respond, and so after the rates come up.
What we're going to ask that.
I know, I'm not the best you could do, but you think they can't.
Just, just so you know, in the CAG, which is, you know, contributing townships, we need quarterly, a lot of their contracts are expiring for their recycling, and they're all indicating, oh, townships, and the increase was about 35%, Chris. So we don't anticipate, we're going to be the exception to that rule, and that's once a week.
Right, oh, yes.
Yeah, so it's going to increase significantly is what we're anticipating, which is in about another next year. So I'm sure we're going to be in that same boat as a comparison.
Margie?
Why do we carry a balance in there?
So we can pay the bills. So the balance of this fund is very low. In fact, I was talking to Christine about whether we had enough liquidity in the event that there was a delay in collection of the fee throughout the year to be able to pay all the expenses. This is the lowest percent of the budget amount that we hold as a reserve, as a balance in the fund.
You can't factor that out though, right? So we know what the contract is, we know what the costs are every year, so should we.
Well, that's not true. We know what the collection costs are, the tipping costs change every single time they go to the dump.
And they've been high this year.
They have been going, they have been going up. So the more people are getting rid of, the more we have to pay, and the bills for tipping and the bills for the collection service are monthly, whereas we bill everyone quarterly. So we do need to carry a balance.
A million dollars, okay, thank you.
It's not a million dollars. If you look at projections for this year, it's down to 1,600,000, 700,000 potentially.
I don't remember offhand. I'm thinking of the cash balance, because I just did the treasures report, and that's what we had talked about, the balance, and that is really low. It was only about $400,000 cash, and that's enough for like maybe two months' worth of expenses, and that's pushing it, so.
Okay. Any other questions on waste on this slide?
Well, just from your expenses there for the 2026 budget and the revenues for the 2026 budget, I'm looking at about a $148,000 deficit, that 5%. And that's, so we're looking at a deficit for this fund of that 5% going into the next year.
Yeah.
And that's going to be paid out of this fund that we have in reserve for the waste.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So this can't continue, right?
I did want to block out one.
So we're doing a fifth year of a contract, there's an escalator in that fifth year, and our expenses, even though we don't know exactly what the tipping fees will be, the best estimates we have are that we have enough revenue to cover the expenses, so we're going to be lowering the fund balance. It's like lowering your bank account because your costs are higher than your drink.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, next one.
So capital reserve fund, again, comparison, some key informational highlight is a lot of the grant awards that we had budgeted for 2025 are going to carry into 2026. We're not going to receive them in 2025. Most of them, you submit for reimbursement once the project is completed. So that's a big carry forward on the revenue side. And then obviously the difference in transfer from the general fund to capital reserve this year.
Any questions on the revenues?
On the expense side, on the expense side, really the main expenditures are the projects that we've been working on the last several years. The TMDL plans, a lot of the stormwater projects, and then the continued projects over our community park. That's really the main expenditures out of the capital reserve fund, as well as the major capital equipment that was discussed previously on the capital plan.
So I have a question for Mark on this one. So do you think we'll be finished with Fresh Meadows in '26?
Yeah, absolutely. Hold out 5%.
And then we've got some lining work to do, which is what's, this costs in the capital reserve budget for next year for Fresh Meadows. And then you're moving into Canterbury with your own team and with potential lining work, correct?
Right.
Thanks.
What's that traffic study, 0.14%? What is that, traffic study on the capital reserve expenses?
That is really just a placeholder that we budget in case there's any traffic issues that need to be addressed. It's the same budget for 2026 as we budgeted in 2025. We haven't spent anything the last few years, but things do come up sometimes that need to be addressed, and that's what those funds are there for.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to what that would be, like with traffic studies?
It would essentially be anything that the board, the police department.
We've definitely had some in the past, I just can't think of one off.
Okay. Not that it's much, but.
Yeah, we've definitely had some in the past. I just can't think of one of them offhand, but I can look up and give you some examples if you want some, so, yeah, it is, it's a small amount.
Any other questions from the board on the capital reserve? Any public comments or questions, Margie?
What's the status of the splash pad?
We applied for a grant with DCD back in May because of the budget impasse, everything was held up, so we're hoping to hear about that in the first quarter of 2026. And that's going to depend, and then the board will make a decision whether or not to move forward with it if we get, if we don't get the grant. But, actually, no, we are going to move forward with it because we have secured $450,000 of grant funding already, so I correct myself. But yes, we're waiting on a grant application.
So previous grant applications have included the suite of projects, including the renovation of basketball court, some drainage things, there's the additional public restroom that we'll be, we'll get the bid results on soon, that was all part of it.
We actually, we actually opened the bid results for bathrooms today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so those will be in front of the board for intent to award on December 2nd.
So that's the second phase, and the third phase is the splash pad, so we have one more grant application to see if we get success with one of that. Any other questions? Sal?
I don't know, I think I referred to it earlier, the committed funds of 2025, budgeted versus projected, obviously a big drop in 2026 projected, so what didn't get done?
So Montgomery Avenue, I think, some of the TMDL plans, part of that was the community park, those projects carrying over. I can't think of the rest of them off the top of my head, but.
The big one was Fresh Meadows.
Yeah.
So we had allocated to do the Fresh Meadows project with a contractor based on a construction cost estimate that was given to us from Carol Engineering. However, our public works group has been working really diligently in there in-house, and we've saved a significant amount of money because of the work that they've been doing.
So does committed funds weren't spent because we did it in-house, or did we just push this?
Both.
Okay. So 7.2 for 2026, any new projects or just continuation of what we see up there?
There's a couple new ones, but most of them are carryovers. I think Canterbury and Collins are the only new ones, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. That's correct. And then we've adjusted some of the pricing for some of the carryover projects to reflect any sort of inflationary items, because they haven't been updated in a while.
You always face the possibility, so let's just take this splash pad, right? Let's say the grant award information's delayed until April or May, so we don't start design work till the second half of the year, so the construction doesn't happen till the next year, but we're budgeting now in case we need to.
Now you know what.
Why, because people, other people may not know.
Okay, very good, question fair enough.
All right, other questions? All right, next slide, please.
So this is just liquid fuels, this is just straightforward. This is money that the township gets from the state that we can use for different road items. The township uses it to put towards the paving project. The estimated budget is estimate, the estimate that we received from the state for what our award is anticipated to be in 2026. So we're just utilizing the number they gave us, but.
And just to be clear, the source of money for this comes from the state, but it comes from what we pay per pump for our gas, is that correct?
I believe so.
That's correct.
I don't know.
There's a certain percentage of what we pay per gallon for our gas goes to the liquid fuels fund, and that in turn gets sent to the different townships for road maintenance.
And there's a formula, like we maintain our liquid fuels math that gets updated as roads get dedicated, and the funding formula is based on the roads, the road mileage in the township.
So when you go from Pennsylvania to Delaware, you see a decrease, a big decrease in the cost per gallon, and that's the reason.
Yes?
If you just go to the expenses, we always show that we're going to spend everything that we get, and we should every year, but at the end of the year, there seems to always be like a $60,000 balance.
There is always a little bit of a balance in there. We keep a little bit of funds in there, one to keep the account open, and then just as a little bit of a contingency, we had that the other year.
Was it 2023?
I forget what year it was, where something happened with the project and we ended up being over budget, and we used a portion of that balance to make up the difference. So that's why we keep a little bit there.
But it's my understanding, so for like 2026, we're expected to spend roughly $1.2 million on repaving 5.3 miles of road, and we, we use the liquid fuels money tax to pay for that, and then the remaining balance we take out of.
General fund.
General fund. So why not just take the?
Well, that's allocated to specific roads that we apply for, right, Chris? So yeah, it has to be the cost of those specific roads.
So what happens is Mark prepares, Mark prepares, and Mark, please correct him if I'm wrong, he prepares, he prepares a list of roads, those go to Carol Engineering, they provide a budget estimate for it, and it's also based on certain amount of base repairs, certain amount of paving depth, things of that nature. And as they go through the project, as we've seen on late, at least the last two years, maybe three, there hasn't been the same level of base repair that was originally anticipated. Is that correct?
Yeah.
There hasn't been the same level of base repair that's been anticipated, so the projects may be awarded a certain amount, but they come in at less because there just isn't, because they do such a good job of keeping the roads together that there isn't as much work as needed.
And if you run into a lot of patient care, then it's got to run.
Correct.
And I'll just make one more comment about the balance in that fund. You know, you can see that at the end of 2025, we're projecting we're going to have about 60,000, but based on the budgets, we're taking, I'm trying to take it down to about 30 to really minimize the amount of money that's left there. The reason for that is a lot of times what the state estimates we're going to receive, we end up receiving more than that. You know, I can't really budget that way because, you know, they're telling me we're going to receive a certain amount, so I don't want to, you know, go against that and expect more and then us, you know, get what they said that we were going to. So it's great that we're getting more than they're initially estimating, but that's why that balance, we always intend to take it down lower, but that variance is because of the variance in the amount of money we actually end up receiving.
I want to say we get the estimate letter in like October.
Yeah.
And then the funding comes in March.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on liquid fuels? All right, we'll move to, we already did expenses, right?
Yeah. I kind of just talked about them together.
The ARPA fund?
Yep, so for the ARPA fund, we're not projecting any budget for 2026. We're expecting that we're going to be wrapped up with those funds by the end of this year. We're down to about $40,000 left in that account, and we're waiting for the last payment application on the Government Services Center basin that's going to use the rest of that balance. So we're expecting that by the end of the year. Obviously, that's delayed into next year, it may carry over, but we're expecting at this point to, you know, pay that out by the end of the year.
So, you know, just to comment on the American Rescue Plan, we received two tranches of money totaling about $2.4 million in the last couple of years. We've also received interest earnings on that money.
Correct.
I think it's a really good example of how we use those funds specifically for stormwater infrastructure improvements in West Ocean. So I said this last year, but I'll say it again now, we have four general buckets of expenditure when it comes to stormwater. One is the corrugated metal pipe replacement that we've talked a lot about already that Mark and his team do, but when they can't do it, we have to hire in the lining experts to manage that lining of CMP corrugated. But when they can't do it, we have to hire in the lining experts to manage that lining of CMP corrugated metal pipes. So that's fixing and improving our existing infrastructure in neighborhoods. The second category is large projects that we know need to be done typically around culverts under existing roads. So two great examples of this are the Montgomery Avenue project we'll be doing. We did also outline the culvert between Kelly Sports and the Point Apartments on Mat Lake Street. So that's the second bucket of kind of major expense, or Ballma Street as well, there's a large project over there near Dewey Pile. So that's the second stormwater infrastructure, large expense that we have not had to pay out of our own revenue because of this American Rescue Plan Act that we were given the money from the federal government. The third bucket is the state required MS4 permit projects, the pollution reduction, typically sediment is one of our key goals here. And we've had many conversations about these projects and the one that we completed this year was Government Services Centre Basin rehabilitation to make that a much more functioning and effective basin in terms of stormwater sediment removal and hit some of the counts of reduction that we are mandated to do by our permit from the state. Then the fourth and final stormwater projects that we look at are these neighborhoods that don't have any infrastructure, that were built decades and decades ago with inadequate stormwater or there's change because people fill in the swales on their property that were designed to convey stormwater away from there and let it move through the neighborhood. And we did a study of all those neighborhoods by Carol Engineering using this, these funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. And we've been working on identifying the projects that we can apply for grants for to resolve some of these longstanding issues. And a good example of this is the North Hills project that's coming to a conclusion right now. So that was done with some, with a grant from the state and with some money from this particular fund.
I just wanted to add that the corrugated metal piping project was an emergency in those instances like Fresh Meadows where we had collapsing pipes that needed immediate attention, so we put most of the money towards that.
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize that, Charlotte's points here, the infrastructure for stormwater is particularly important for us to address because of the under-year storm scene happening sometimes every other month. And residents are complaining to the township, what can I do, what can I do? It's a divorce and I'm my property. So we're trying to address it in a physically responsible way.
Okay, so I think that concludes our review of the funds. I think you want to go over the capital.
Yeah, I have, the last slide is just about the capital purchases. So this is just, you know, in addition to the Capital Reserve Fund. And here I just have highlighted the projects that were already discussed and approved of the capital plan at the previous meeting. And then the last bullet point just lists the changes that have occurred to the capital plan since it was presented at the last meeting. We had some price adjustments and some additional items that were talked about at subsequent meetings as well.
The most significant increase that the board is aware of is the condition of the Pavilion in Cooper Smith Park. We allocated $150,000 for the replacement of that, we're still waiting on the actual estimate. But I talked to Mark and Mike and we felt 150 was a good placeholder for the time being.
Any questions on our capital projects for 26?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
What's the standard for replacement of large capital items like backloaders and things of that nature? Is there a criteria for replacement or is it kind of subject?
So there's a replacement schedule based on age typically, but depending on the wear and tear on the equipment, it may extend beyond the typical replacement age or it may be replacing sooner depending on what happened.
What is that age, just out of curiosity?
For that specifically, I'm not sure, but it is all on the capital plan.
This is Chairman, we have our lead mechanic, John Whitey here to see if he has any insight into this. John, give any insight into this?
So basically, the replacement of those capital, the backhoe, you were questioning, that bag is 20 years old. It's been accruing a cost each year to just make it operational to do the job. So it's about the same thing with the air compressor up there. We've been having fuel injector issues with that, getting it running, but that's also.
Is the general standard like, you know, dump trucks or trailers or vehicles? I'm just kind of curious, does rolling stock have a specific thing or is that kind of like when, you know, it's costing more than 5% of the board for a year or something like that? I get it, I don't know, so I'm just kind of curious if there's a standard that's kind of.
So each, each thing has like different here, so it's not like, they're not all the same. So it's replaced, I guess like when we discuss it, whether it needs to be replaced or not?
Well, the capital plan has on it, it has all of the purchase dates, so you can tell how old it is. And then we typically have a lifespan beside it and that's what we start with. And then when we get to that year, we'll sort of evaluate it, so that's sort of our standard. I forget offhand what we have all of the trucks at, but the general replacement schedule for the trucks, however many years it is, is on the capital plan. I just don't have that one.
Are larger trucks typical 10, 12 years, much smaller trucks, 70, 10 years?
I was kind of curious, is it more mileage than a year thing? 1,000 miles in 10 years, but maybe this roll is not.
John will notify us if something.
Okay. John, John keeps excellent records of our equipment. I can tell you when we said in our capital plan meetings, we may have things that are lined up to get replaced and we will push those things either out a few years. He's made recommendations to change our replacement schedules based on wear and tear. So we do make adjustments, it's not just like, oh, it's 10 years and it's time to replace it. But in things like, in things like, like to your question about mileage, like our police vehicles, we probably have to replace sooner because they may have 1 miles, but they run 24 hours, 7 days a week, so the wear and tear is much greater.
Margie.
How do we determine which of these expenses gets paid out of the general fund and what gets paid out of the capital reserve fund?
These are all being paid out of the capital reserve fund, with the exception of some of the renovations that are listed in there that we had discussed. It was the renovation to the reception area, the detective closet, repairs like that are a general fund, but all equipment and, you know, stormwater projects are out of the capital reserve fund.
And the police vehicles, are they gasoline or electric or?
gasoline. Excuse me, gasoline.
Congratulations. Other comments or questions? So that's it, only presentation, I believe.
Yeah, that's the last slide that I have.
So what I'd like to do now is just see if the board have any questions or adjustments they would like to make or to the preliminary budget. Obviously, we're going to hopefully approve the advertisement of this, but I just want to take care of that piece of business first. So I have one topic I would like to bring up and I mentioned this previously. And that is the Westchester Library contribution. I would like to see us increase that in line with inflation and round it up to $30,000 instead of $28,750. So I'm going to see if the board will support that and if so, then obviously the final budget, you could make that adjustment. So board, other board members, do you have any comments on that?
Okay, yeah, it's a great service, but if you want to go short.
Do we take a motion on it, Chris, or we just direct stand for now?
I don't think, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a motion. I think we can just adjust it for the final budget.
Comments?
It's just a small increase, right?
Yeah, $1,250.
I take issue with it only because we had a representative from the library come and make a request to the board. And the request was for a specific amount of money, which was 28 whatever. So why would we just, out of the generosity of your taxpayers, just increase what we have?
So the generosity of taxpayers funds the library system in the county. So in this particular location in Westchester, 25% of the car holders are from West Ocean. 25% of the checkouts are from the residents of West Ocean and we provide 15% of the municipal funding. So we're not paying our way really, Margie. I would just like us to see, to show some belief in the benefit that the library provides. And the $1,250 increase of our contribution doesn't leave us any further up the municipal contribution ladder.
Right, but I do want to point out that I do feel like it's double taxation because there is a specific mileage rate on our county taxes for the library.
But it doesn't fund the whole library system. Do you know how much the county tax provides for the library system? It will, nowhere near 100%, obviously.
Well, I think it's a great cause and I heard the request from a citizen when it came about. And I went to the website, they have a capital fund going and I got out my checkbook and I wrote a check and I sent it to the library. I think those of us that think that it's a good cause and they do fundraisers, if we want to see more money go to the library, then we should take that on ourselves. We shouldn't have all this taxpayers just.
I appreciate your generosity and it's good that you do, but not everybody does. So a stable source of funding is what municipalities provide year on the year. And it's a good way to fund something when you know what your revenue is going to be. So I believe we have board support for it, so at this point, yes, Doug?
My comment is to agree with Margie on that. If you're going to give a contribution, we started this, I think, my dad, $2,500, $100 a year as a gesture and it's grown. It's not, we're not obligated to do this. And also I'd like to see, if you're going to give to Westchester, you should also give to Hankin Branch in Exton. I think that if you poll, most of the residents in this township, they go to Exton Ranch because of the parking and it's a much bigger facility. Westchester was put there after the dank building closed in the 90s. Chester County Library used to be on Market Street in the dank building on the second floor. And then Hankin Branch opened. And then in order to keep library services in the borough, the borough library opened. So that's my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Bob?
I'm pro, go for the 30,000, absolutely. So I disagree, but I have a question, when the library uses this room, do we charge them?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe historically we have.
Okay.
Any other question?
Why is that?
We generally haven't charged any sort of governmental institution like the school district or the county who utilizes our facilities, correct, Karen?
Ms. Walsh?
I also would like to echo my support of the board's support for the library. I think it's well deserved.
Steve?
I think it's a good gesture.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other issues the board has with the overall budget, any adjustments they believe would be, should be considered for the final budget?
I have one suggestion. I know that a couple of years ago, Mr. Bateshaw requested some upgrades in his office. I would like to see you get the new desk this year. I don't know if that's something that you would kind of purchase out of quantity existing line items or whether you would need to make a special item for that. But I would like to see Chris get some decent office equipment. I think it's really old and I think it's broken. That's my suggestion.
Didn't we talk about using one of the facility maintenance line items to pick some of that?
We did, but my preference would be if we want to do any sort of upgrades to put that money towards, you know, things that are more forward facing, like the money we have allocated towards redoing the reception area. And I also think we could maybe look to do some upgrades to this space like we talked about previously. These chairs are original and are kind of falling apart. So I think that money would be better spent someplace else I can, I can make do. And I, but I wanted to say I appreciate what we're trying to do.
You're turning down the guns.
I will volunteer to fix this, yes.
Yeah, no, I will, I will make, I will make them. But I would rather see things that are forward facing have money allocated for them.
Just let us not have a desk collapse.
Don't hurt yourself.
Well, my bookcase is actually actively falling apart, so I don't take anything apart for it.
All right, any other issues from the board? All right, is there anyone who's here that has heard the whole presentation that believes there's any recommend, you have a suggestion for alteration for the final budget? Margie?
Yes. I did not see our restricted open space park account in the budget. We have a million, $1.2 million in a fund and that's not represented in our budget anywhere. And I would like to see that included in the final budget. And I do not see the 8.50, $850,000 roughly that we should be getting from the developers of Greystone next year. So that's not accounted for in the budget. So I think by my calculations, there's about $2 million that we have or we should be getting. That's not reflected in the budget, I think those numbers should be.
So was it 2 million, I hear they want 850 from Greystone, less than 2 million?
Then 1 million from the restricted parks.
So that already exists as a balance in a fund, right? So we had a full discussion on that in email exchange last year and the board's position is we don't need to budget for those. Most of us surrounding municipalities don't budget for all the funds. They do the funds that have revenue and expenses that are in and out. So I think we've already settled that question from this board. I hear you, we've had the conversation.
As are.
Are we hiring more police officers?
I don't believe so, chief, we've got 32 and we.
If you'd like to find one, I can. In my opinion, I would like to see more police officers hired. I would also like the same increase that we could publish everything.
Okay, thank you. Margie?
I just want to make a comment. A number of years ago, up until maybe 2018 or 19, we used to reflect the township's policy on what the reserve amount should, would be. We have a minimum of two months expenditures or whatnot. So if the budget itself reflected our policy. When I questioned that, it has since disappeared and that figure, that chart, that graphic is no longer included in the budget. I would like to see that part of the budget. And then also I had communication email with you all today. And up until budget year 2021, we had an all-fund summary that was included in the budget and.
Is it the preliminary budget or the final budget?
Or.
I think it's usually the final budget, I was speaking.
Correct.
So you'll see that in December. All right, any other questions? Ed?
Am I looking at the numbers right for the general fund? Or are you going to deficit position this year, about 2 million? Revenue's at like 20.6 and expenses.
Like including the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund, that is correct. So we didn't transfer any money.
Okay, so, but that's coming out of the, out of the reserve fund to the Capital Reserve Fund.
It's not a reserve fund, it's the balance in the general fund, we're moving 2 million of the balance there over to the Capital Reserve. That has typically been the way the process has worked.
There's a follow-up, and it might be ignorant question, so we don't get involved. But as a business person, I can say, do we have a balance sheet? I'm sure we have a balance sheet.
Yeah, they're all, they're all in the audit statements.
Absolutely.
So where would I hide?
On the website. It's all available on the website.
If you give me some direction, I'm kind of where to go, or do I just go to the website and go type balance sheet?
It's in the finance department, it's in the finance department section under government and you click on, on it. All your reports are available there.
Aren't you asking them like to date, what's our?
Well, you'll get the message, so I have that now. So that's why we have a balance sheet, obviously, for 2024. There's no, you don't, I assume you don't keep that running until we're even, we add it to 2025 or is there?
Right, we really.
We can run it month to month, but it's not really going to be an accurate picture because.
This thing goes on.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we can run it at any point, but it's not going to be accurate just because of the flows and, you know.
When does it become finalized, when is 2025 accurate with 2026?
Well, it's supposed to be June, this year was a little different than that. But yeah, it's typically by June 30th, everything's finalized and published on the website.
Thank you. I mean, I think the debates that we had this time last year. I mean, I think the debates that we had this time last year was about, okay, you know, each fund had monies that was or were not committed in, you know, that there was, they created some angst for how much money was in the general, was it the reserve fund, whether it was committed or not committed. I know we had a discussion about only upcoming bills that are coming out again and all that. I just don't feel better if my New World Money was and what was committed.
Uh, it's it's all explained in the audit report.
That's why I said.
If you go look at it, you'll be able to.
It was an ignorant question until, but it just kind of came to my mind right then.
Tell me your questions because you're afraid that there was something being hidden. There isn't.
I'm not suggesting that. I just want to know where it is. I just want to see all the buckets.
Got to look at it.
Good engineer, you're a good engineer yourself. You would have probably asked to see.
Looked at it. All right. Any other questions? All right, well, I'd just like to thank all the staff who've been involved with preparing the 2026 budget and for being here tonight. We appreciate all the work you've done and a special thanks to Christine as usual. So, well done. And we need to just do, make a motion here to approve advertising the preliminary budget. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
Second was Tina. All right. Is there any public comments or questions on the motion? If Ken will take a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. We want to agenda item number five. People, you know.
I think this is positive. Now I think it's like 75. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to tee this topic up?
Uh, yes, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
President, agenda number five.
Yes, this is about the auditor. So before the board this evening, it's a proposal from Barbicane Thornton Company for auditing services for West Coast Township. At the September 2nd meeting, the board directed the township's staff to seek alternative options for the performance of the 2025 audit. This was a result of significant issues that were experienced in the 2024 audit with the current firm. For some background information, in 2022, the board authorized the issuance of a request for proposal for auditing services. At the November 1st, 2022 meeting, the board were awarded a contract for 2022 to BBD Inc. Subsequent to that, the board agreed to continue using this firm. Between the awarding of the initial contract and present, BBD Inc. was sold to Withum, which resulted in certain changes of the company. The government accounting division of Withum was subsequently sold to Clifton Larson Allen in July of 2025. These sales resulted in structural changes that impact the township's ability to receive the completed audit statements in a timely manner. This caused certain critical reporting deadlines to be missed. Christine and I reviewed the pricing provided in the proposal before the board this evening and the price for fiscal year 2025 included, included in the response to the township's RFP and the cost that's presented before the board this evening is comparable.
Comparable with what they provided in the RFP response to you.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So board questions or comments on the Barbicane proposal?
Uh, yeah. Have we checked any of the references?
So we've utilized this firm previously. This was the firm that was utilized by the township prior to the 2023 audit year. For decades.
Most, a large portion of our neighboring municipalities utilize them as well. So we have firsthand experience and, you know.
And you're comfortable working with them?
Christine, I see that Steve and Kay is our account rep, but he does have, looks like a new person who would be the lead for the audit. Are you not concerned here? Yeah.
No different than what we've sort of been dealing with as it is.
I figured it.
Equal year after year, so.
Yeah, I mean, plus you've got Steve there, you know, pretty well. So in terms of the proposal, the price commitment involved a two-year, there was two-year pricing, but there's also an option for not needing the specific pension audit statements.
Correct.
Do you have a recommendation for the board?
You know, I'm fine with eliminating them to save some money overall. You know, we've always operated that way and I won't, I won't say that they're not nice to have. It makes things a little bit easier when we have, because our pensions are audited, you know, numerous times, you know, by the state and things like that. So it's easier to have those plans, you know, separated out to just be able to hand them, you know, a small little booklet versus, you know, 200 pages. But to me, I'd rather eliminate them and do the extra work myself of sort of like pulling pages out of the statements that they need. I'm fine with that. It saves some money and, you know.
How long do we get, how long do we get the state audit?
Um, so it's supposed to be every three years.
Probably every seven.
Yeah, that does not happen. We just had ours, when was that?
They closed, they closed a year. It was in 24, but I think it was a year in 24.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be every three years. That just never happens. They're always really behind schedule. So it ends up being like four, five, sometimes more than that, years at a time. But that's what, that's what we've had utilize of for this. But the same information is contained, you know, in the township financials. It's just a little more buried in there, I think, but that's okay.
Okay.
What was the budget cost for 2024 for CLA? Do you know all the numbers?
Um, I believe their total was 38,000. It was spread, you know, it's split between general fund and sewer fund and the waste recycling fund, but the total.
About 38,000?
Yeah.
And what was the sewer authority?
Oh, I don't remember. I don't remember offhand. It's not a big difference for the sewer authority from, you know, now CLA. It's not, it's not a big difference for the sewer authority from that to the authority. It's pretty comparable.
And Barbicane has recommended a budgeting, opposing a budget for 104,000. So a considerable increase we're looking at.
That I believe is including the sewer authority, which would be a part of.
But it is like comparable to a $40,000 CLA versus 84.
The 40,000 number that I just gave you does not include the sewer authority.
Right, so it's 40,000 for that. If we strip out the sewer authority from this, we're in four, you're looking at eight really.
About, yeah.
So it is, it is a double.
So it is double.
But actually Barbicane, people can actually do the audit versus the struggles that the sort of company has. So you pay for what you get sometimes.
Yeah. I just had a question. I just want to make two questions. The expiration date of their Pennsylvania license is 12/31/25. I guess we'll make sure that.
Yeah, they'll, yeah.
Do that. And then I noticed that you're charging 5% allocated towards meetings that could occur, that need occur. Do you think that's a good amount, 5%?
I would say so. They would only come and do, they would do field, they'll do field work and they'll do some other meetings as part of the audit process. And then the only real one that I would think it would be their presentation that would occur typically end of July, beginning of August.
Okay, so I just didn't want the cost to increase. Partners, $395 an hour and that could add up pretty quickly.
I believe all, I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, all of their field work and all of their testing and everything that they do is in, is part of that price, that $84,000 price.
Other questions from the board? Christine, I have one for you. So the increase from 25 to 26 with Barbicane's about less than 3% is in that two and a half kind of range. Would you, from a, you know, to me, we should rebid this versus just, not now, we need someone to do 25. But you, would you be looking to do a 25, 26 with Barbicane, either propose and just do an RFP for the 27 audit? Or do you want, are you comfortable if you just approve one year and then you have to do an RFP in 26?
Whatever the board wants us to do.
Do you have any intelligence around what is going on with auditing and the, the mailings not of to snuff anymore?
There's really not many companies that provide this service and actually one of, we've heard not, we've heard very similar stories with another company that one of our neighboring townships utilizes, not CLA, but sort of had the same experience with, you know.
A different firm?
Yes. So, you know, there's, there's not many out there and then, you know.
How would you feel if we did an RFP next year and it came back that CLA was 50% cheaper and we were saying, oh, we'll go with that? What would you feel?
You know, we, we could get through it, but, you know, I would be lying if I said that this year wasn't really, really difficult. I mean, we just been, we just got our stuff, you know.
Like, like two weeks ago.
Yeah, so, you know.
This would be for professional services, so we're not required to.
You're not required to, yeah.
There would be other considerations such as your competence and ability to be able to deliver, so.
I do.
More comfortable just getting one year.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing that the board should recall is that when we did the RFP in 2022, we invited 10 firms to respond and only three did.
What's the risk of only doing one year?
I don't see a risk.
It's not like we're locking in a lower price than we need to.
The only risk is if, if we do an RFP next year instead of 107,000 with Barbicane, you know, they're, they're now 120 and you're like, wow, we still don't like the CLA because we have such bad experience and then they'll get two or three bids and then you may pay a higher price of 26 audit. That's, that's the risk.
But the advantage to it is it would justify, if we did keep Barbicane going into the future, library did, if we did the RFP.
Yeah.
And it gives them a year to prove to us that they're doing a good job. And if they don't.
I think it's. It is, it is. And we, we have, you know, obviously had experience with them in the past, so they sort of know our, you know, operations and our, you know, we're not doing that, you know, ground up training and sort of.
Well, you do have a new lead though, which will be a learning curve for that person, so.
Well, they did say 95% of their clients, they retain and they're increasing it by 10% per year.
Yeah, they, they definitely do. I will say they have a huge ease of.
Townships.
Authority for any of those problems, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other public comment or question before we consider what we're going to do? Margie?
Yeah, it would just be nice if they were here to present something themselves.
I don't think we need it, really. I mean, we, this is the devil we know. We've had them here for years and years and years.
That was the devil that this.
It's not like, we've got all the marketing materials, we know all the cable and field, we've got the real like, for it to Christie. Anyway, any other questions, comments?
I do, I think from my research a couple of years ago, I'm not sure that sewer authority and township is permitted to have the same auditing. Could be wrong and have to go back and check it, but.
I don't know if Christine or Christine will get experience with that.
Oh, we're done.
Yeah, and it's actually really hard to have two separate firms. We, we've had that, I believe, the first year with the township went with now CLA, with BBD at the time. The, the authorities stayed with Barbicane. The problem with having two separate firms is in order to complete the township's financials, the sewer authority's financials are rolled into the township. So we can't, we can't finalize the township's statements without the sewer authority's statements. So we, we had that experience where you have two different companies working on it and your timelines don't line up, then, you know, we could be, you know, late again. Because of some of those.
Where would be the concept of that? I don't, I don't understand.
Well, it's a totally legally separate entity. So now I'm hearing that their financials have to be rolled into ours and that this thing's like, shouldn't be a lack. I mean, they're a separate entity. Why, why are their.
That's very common, separate legal entities, corporations do it all the time and they still have the same auditing firms, not unique.
Well, I'm.
I, I hear you comment. I don't think it's a problem. Barbicane had never come to us and said, you have a conflict here, you get someone else. I mean, and they usually do. They'll let you know. An auditor will let you know they can't do that business with you.
And CLA that has, we know about call me there, so.
Okay. Well, who, where are we? We, we, I'm hearing the, the preference for one year commitment with Barbicane for the 104,975 for 25 year audit.
Yes, one year.
One year? Okay, would someone like to make that motion now, please?
I'll make that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so good emotions. Any public comment or questions, Margie?
Was that broken down when you said that's the total for the two entities?
So it's 104,975, of which 20,225 was for the sewer authority. The balance was for township, sewer fund and the tax collector.
I know we had a discount this year, but what, what would we get there?
We were 40,000 for the township and what, 18 maybe for the sewer?
I, I don't know the sewer authority. I can, I can be broken up.
So it's, it's, it's close to double, yeah. But double, double failure is still not what you want, right? So we want someone who can perform an audit professionally.
And that's our beginning discussion before Chris gets too far into his term. I'd love to see our folks forensically audited before he started.
I just don't think there's any appetite for the board to go back. We've got clean audits in terms of the financial transactions of the township. There's no need to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on a forensic audit. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. Thank you, Christine. Have a good evening.
Thanks for your work with us.
Okay, agenda item number six, discussion and possible awarding of a bid for caustic soda for the West Coast Township wastewater treatment plant. Any minute?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to?
Oh, I've got it. Good. So before the board this evening, are the results of the bids for caustic soda for the wastewater treatment plant. This is the first time we believe that this has been bid out by the township, as with other items for the wastewater treatment plant awarded at the November 6th meeting. The bids were opened on November the 5th. Chris advises that the, the Director of Wastewater Operations, Mike, did notify him of the bid, but he had not put it on the agenda for the previous board meeting when we awarded the other contracts. So there was only one bidder for the item, which was from Univast Solutions in the amount of $3.70 a gallon for a one-year contract. Univast Solutions is the supplier for the polyaluminum chloride that wastewater treatment plant also uses. Mike, was there, is this our current supplier or not?
It is not. We have been using CoStars.
Okay.
Our usage has increased, costs have increased. We don't, we can get a better price.
Is this a better price than you currently pay? Is this a better price than you're paying?
It is a better price.
It is, okay, good.
What did we pay last year?
Per gallon?
Yeah.
It fluctuated because it's CoStars, it was probably 450 or 500 per gallon.
So it's not fluctuating either, right? This would be a fix for the 12 months, yeah.
How come they don't want three-year, Mike? Because of the cost?
I guess they don't take that risk anymore.
Yeah.
I don't believe they've bid on the three-year option for the polyaluminum chloride either.
How much do we spend on this chemical?
So that's a good question because we've all been using it for about three years.
Yeah.
The first year was about 20, 25,000. This year we're going to be closer to 60,000. It's pH control, particularly for the Comex system and it's just, we're using close to 40 gallons a day right now, so.
Except with the fingers in line?
Yeah. And loss, but volume is the driver.
You'll save 25% of that. If you prove. All right, are there any other questions? All right, I will make a motion to award the caustic, 50% caustic soda solutions applied to Univast Solutions in the amount of $3.70 a gallon for 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Is there any public questions on the motion? Okay, Ken will take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. Next up is discussion of proposed ordinance for the termination of water, water service. Chris, would you introduce this one, please?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening, it's a discussion regarding proposed ordinance to provide for the termination of water service for the non-payment of municipal sewer charges. Currently, the township has approximately 3% of its accounts, the accounts identified as delinquent with the outstanding amount representing approximately 5% of the projected revenue in the 2025 budget. I actually did receive from our finance department an updated balance on our delinquencies and it's roughly $351,000. So it is slightly higher than what I wrote last week when preparing the meeting materials. While the township sends notices to account holders with delinquent balances regularly and offers payment plans, there's typically a limited response to this correspondence. Additionally, the township's finance department does work with Solicitor's Office to file liens for non-payment and has initiated enhanced enforcement when necessary in certain, certain, certain circumstances. However, these are long processes with liens not being paid until the property is sold. The proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 66 of the Township's Code of Ordinances in order to provide for the ability to terminate water service for non-payment. As Aqua owns the public water system in the township, an agreement would need to be made with Aqua. I provided a copy of their standard. I provided a copy of their standard agreement that they submitted to us. Um, one thing I want to note is I think it's important to outline that this is, if this is approved by the board, it would be considered an option of last resort. It is not the goal of the township to terminate water service, but more an effort to have those with delinquent accounts acknowledge the debt and establish ways to pay down the balance and maintain an established payment plan. Additionally, there are generally circumstances where water service cannot be terminated for non-payment. Examples of those would be if a property owner is in active bankruptcy or has bona fide medical needs, that necessity of water service.
Thank you, Chris. So we have a kind of proposed ordinance before us and also the water service termination agreement with Aqua. So I just had a question on that. Is that their standard agreement that they provided to us?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the attorney I spoke with at Aqua said there's very little latitude to make any changes. But I did, I did provide it to Kristen to review.
No issue, you mean, it's what you would expect, right? You've seen that before.
It follows the statute and the only thing that I brought to Chris's attention, just to make sure the board is aware, is that they do have the right to charge the township the lost revenue. Um, Chris had a conversation with the attorney at Aqua and said that they don't do that, but the statute gives them the right and the water, the agreement with Aqua also gives them that right. So I put it into the ordinance that if, if they do, and actually I think we should change it to say, if requested, the township shall pay. Um, but if Aqua does start doing that, I think you have the right to then charge that back to the property owner. So any cost that you incur, which would include payments that you have to make to Aqua for lost revenue, you could put back onto the property owner.
That was actually one of my comments. At number seven, um, the township shall pay each such bill within 30 days and receive thereof and reimbursed by homeowner that they had there. So I didn't see anywhere where we can go after the homeowner for reimbursement.
Six, paragraph six.
Oh, paragraph six.
Six of the ordinance.
Okay.
You're looking at the water service agreement, not the ordinance.
It should be in the.
No, no, that, that's just an agreement between Aqua and township. This is an ordinance that governs what you have rights over, the sewer users.
Okay.
So how would that work in the instance where we've had several properties in the township that have vacated? Can't find the owner. Um, sometimes this goes on for years and, and the water may have ordered it. So, so if we have Aqua come outside of the order because of non-payment of the sewer, we may be assuming.
That wouldn't, the, the situation you're talking about, you're not going to use this remedy because the water's going to be already turned off. So this is not a tool that's going to work in every case. This is going to work in the cases where people are still residing at the property, still taking showers and flushing the toilet every day, but not paying your sewer bill. And you're like, okay, well, that isn't free, so we're going to send you a notice and you're going to make payment in 10 days or we're going to just have Aqua shut your water off. So it's not going to be used in every instance.
So the township makes that decision as whether it be a proper situation to use this option or not?
Yeah, I mean, so we have, and I talked to Chris today, that it's been a little bit since we've had this conversation, but usually quarterly we're meeting and talking about the problem properties. So there's one on Europe Street, 800 Falcon Lane, which actually I got a really great report on. The executor is moving forward. She's cleaning out the house last weekend, so this would not have worked there. Nobody was living there. There is no water there. But there are situations where people are residing in their home, continuing to use the water in sewer, but just are ignoring the bill. There are situations where people don't have the money to pay the bill and, and that may be a situation that, as Chris said, it's, it's a remedy of last resort. The township has always been very reasonable and always tries to work with a payment plan to try to work with its residents. So as Chris and I talked today, it's another tool in your toolbox. It can be very effective in certain cases.
Chris, what's the largest amount an individual could be owing us approximately? No, 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 none were that high.
15?
The highest amount that I'm seeing is.
Like Kirkland Avenue?
Highest amount I'm seeing is about $13,600 and they haven't made a payment since 2010, but they are in active bankruptcy.
That's would not apply.
That would apply to them. Probably the largest one I see that's not marked in that is probably about 7,000. And some people, like I'm looking on here in this report, there are some dates that they've made a payment since 2017, 2018 and we filed liens and a lot of times people say, the lien will get paid off when I sell the property.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's fair because you have, you have, you have a policy that once you get beyond, you see the 1,200, 1,200, you go over the super fascist. But we don't, you can't always serve the people. So we have a property on Kirkland Avenue that has been just a thorn in our side. We, we, we know that she's alive. We don't know where she is. And we can't find her. We have to file a motion for alternative service, which we did to do the writ. Now to actually take it to an execution, we have to do it again. And, and we can do it and we will continue to do it, but there are definitely properties where the property owner, whether they've just left or they've ceased, I mean, in some cases people die, don't open the estate and then you have to go and find the owner. So there's, there's different complicating property problems.
You just said that would be, this is where we would not use this as a.
No, no, I'm just saying that he was, when you were talking about some, to answer Nate's question about some of the higher bills, that, that the people filing the lien is not the last step that you take.
No, but I, and I apologize for mischaracterizing that. We've gotten to the point with some of these property owners where they, or delinquent rate payers, excuse me, where they've gotten to the point of share of sale and then once they reach that point, they come in and they pay off their debt because it's amazing how quickly they can come up with the money. I'm looking at this as kind of like a similar tool that the township can use in order to either recoup that debt or get a payment plan established that people can use.
Oh, you have to be realistic. I mean, we're at 3% delinquency, you know, typically around a half to 2% is our delinquency rate that is. You're just not going to be able necessarily to address through these kind of tools and just talk about examples for that. But the goal, the belief here is that we allow, we have a situation that should be addressed with respect to having this tool that allows some people who are just not doing the right thing, even though they've got potential means to do it, or at least get a payment plan to, to bring them into paying what they owe for the services being provided to them. Is that fair?
Absolutely, yeah.
And we can let, when we want to use.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's not mandatory, yeah.
So.
Okay. What, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, do we approach any of these people and see if they qualify for the rebate?
Anyone who qualifies for the rebate has to keep paying their bills throughout the year. So if they pay their bills throughout the year, then they qualify for the rebate and they can also contact us to see if they qualify and tell them that they have to pay their bills throughout the year. You don't get a rebate unless you pay your payments.
I'm just wondering if that'd be a bargaining tool, if you could get, provide you with a rebate next year, but you need to come up to.
I don't, I don't believe so. I think the better bargaining tool is, the better bargaining tool is what we've done with offering them payment plans that spread the payments out. Or we've done 18 months, I think we've done two years in certain cases where it's extreme to try and get people to actually pay these bills down and keep their payments going. Because right now what they're doing is by not paying all the people who are paying or subsidizing the service for them.
Yeah, I, I, this just doesn't sit well with me. If our sewer bills, like some municipalities out there, their sewer bills are based off of water usage. Our township does not base our sewer charge off of water usage. So these are just completely separate. And, I mean, what's next? We're going to, we're going to call my, uh, I'll pass my horizon and we'll turn off your.
We're not allowed to do that. This is, this is state law that allows this to be done. So they're following the parameters of the state law. The hypothetical you gave is not a state law.
Well, I'm, I'm making time, like, sorry, but, um, I feel more comfortable if we talked to Aqua's attorney and found out the municipalities that do have this agreement, are those sewer rates connected to the water usage?
I can tell you, we had this agreement in Malvern and it wasn't connected to the water usage.
Um, the township does not allow a resident who might be gone for three months or six months to turn off, or pause their sewer.
That's not accurate. We can have people be put on vacancy.
But that was not for trash.
That's correct, actually. Yes, that's for trash collection.
So maybe we should offer that to people that are gone for three months or six months. Hey, if you're not going to be here, you can show, bring your water bill and show that you didn't use the wastewater treatment. Still set that.
There's still set, there's still set charges. There's a, because it's connected into the sewer system, there's still a charge for that connection.
Well, you're still, there's.
Yeah, there's a fixed operation.
Fixed operation, yeah.
You have to run the whole system and maintain it, whether you put one drop of water in or 10,000 gallons in a day.
I just don't, this must be a good idea.
Well, it is, it's a tool of last resort. It's intended to get people to say, oh, you're right, I should be, got a payment plan. And if there's a real hardship situation, I'm sure we'll understand what it is and the board can make an appropriate decision.
Correct, absolutely, always correct.
But the one thing I do have is it isn't our process here that the, number one on the ordinance, aren't we giving people a quarter to kind of?
Yes.
So this 30 days should be a change, is that?
My recommendation to that would be anyone who's behind by about, by four quarters because that would follow pretty much what we're doing with liens. So anyone who gets that far behind that reaches this, because we do send, if they don't pay by the end of the month, we do send leave notices to people. And I will say, a good number of those regular people who just miss their payment, they come in and they make payment once they get the letter from our finance department. This is more to address the habitual situations.
You're saying, you're saying extend that to four quarters then?
That would be my recommendation, because that would follow what we're doing with liens currently.
Would you, would you want a notification about potential water shut-off to come before a lien notification?
I probably would, yes.
So if you make it three quarters and then after that, there's no response, then.
That's fine. It's a policy determination for the board.
Yeah, the statute only requires that you have to at least be 30 days late.
Can I weigh in for just a second? I think I, you know, I've been pretty vocal about this in the past, needs to come up. I don't support this measure. I've given it a lot of thought. I believe that we already have a remedy built in in filing liens against these properties to recover these accruals when the property is sold. And I feel that is sufficient. You know, and water is a, it's a necessity of life and I don't believe that it's something that the township necessarily needs to use as leverage against residents who, you know, don't have the means to pay their bill. Um, I understand where all of your coming from, but I think it's a lot easier for us to sit up here and sort of talk about the logistics of it and why are, you know, it makes sense or not, and the fact that it's allowed. But as a human being and as a representative in this township, I don't support this.
Thank you, Ashlyn.
I have a few more questions too, just, um, what kind of administrative task are we assuming if we took this on as like, as an option? I mean, from what I read of the actors, but if you would notice requirements that have to be met, and we had to send out a representative township along with the Aqua, person that the actor shut off and also I believe when you shut it back on again. So I mean, how much time are we talking about? And we would have to invest in this, that we utilize?
I don't think a significant amount of time because I can tell you in other places where this, where I've had this type of policy from the elected officials, it, I've only ever used this where someone's water's been shut off one time.
Okay, so it's rarely used.
Yes, it's very rare. I, I can tell you like in, in Malvern, when the notices would get sent, people would generally come in and pay. And the same thing happened in Washington Township where we had a similar policy.
To your knowledge, how many other municipalities have adopted this as a, as an option?
I know Malvern has, I know in Malvern we had this type of provision. I believe the Borough has this in there.
West End Borough has it?
I believe the Borough has this in their code ordinances.
Do they use it though?
I, I don't know.
I don't think they have it, I'm not sure.
I believe, I think they do have it in their code, but I don't think they've, I don't know if they've ever used it. Um, we had this in Washington Township where I work and we own a portion of our, of the water system in the municipality. I don't know off the top of my head. I did, I did some basic research, but I don't remember the municipalities off the top of my head.
So I guess without this tool, we have to wait till a lien's put on the property or it's sold, which could be 10, 15 years or whatever.
That's true, that's what I'm saying. So we do take actions now to enforce the lien. So we, what, you file what's called a root of scare fascist against the property owner that gives them 20 days to dispute the debt. If they don't dispute the debt, you can then take it through to a judgment and then take the judgment to an execution. And then it forces the seller home to collect on a lien. And then typically, well, typically then there's a mortgage that has, we, our lien has priority over the mortgage, so a lot of times the mortgage company pays. So we spend a lot of time writing letters and having phone conversations with the mortgage companies.
From a legal perspective, is part-time concerning?
On some things, yeah. And all of our charges are added on to their account, yeah.
Every month, every month in our invoices for Kristen's office, there's a whole section on municipal liens and the work that's been done with those.
Those charges.
Those detrimental to the property owner, yeah, means they lose.
You end up paying so much more money. I mean, it's, it's really, it's upsetting because I don't think they realize it. Penalty is the interest, additional legal fees that if, if they, and that's why it's good to get on a payment plan. And it's, the other thing about these payment plans is you have to also remain current on your new bills coming in. So you can't be paying off your old, but then not paying the new bills as they come because then you're just, you're never catching up.
Okay. And any other thoughts from anyone in attendance?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you one question. Is there any legal liability that could be assumed by the township on taking this on? For example, the water gets shut off, a fire starts, you can't put out the fire because the hose won't work. I mean, are we going into unjoint territory?
I don't think so because this is authorized by the law. I mean, you, if you follow the procedures that the law allows you to do, how are you, you, no, I don't, I don't believe.
And the individual, the water service would be connected to the individual property. I don't think it would be connected to like a fire manager in the street. That'd be a separate water service line, if I'm correct, Steve.
Right.
Unless they have sprinklers.
Lost my train of thought. Oh, so for instance, you gave an example of someone who's, you can't find them, you don't know where they are. So we turn off their water. But they're, they're still going to get billed quarterly for their sewer and they're not here. That's what I'm saying.
In cases like that, we know we can't find them. This wouldn't be a tool we would use. I think that's a comment you made.
If we can't provide adequate service to them per the statute, we can't use this tool.
Oh, it is kind of subjective who the township is going to use.
All of these collection cases are somewhat, I don't want to say subjective, but we, we analyze the facts and we determine what is the best legal tool to use to get paid. I think we do that in all of these cases where they get above a certain number.
And you consider turning off their water a legal tool?
It is, it's a legal tool. It's, it's authorized by the statute, the Water Services Act. And we're following exactly what the statute requires.
I think if our water was connected with our sewer rates, I'd be okay with it, but the fact that they're completely different, I, Ashlyn said it well.
The electric.
Well, that's slightly different. Ashlyn's point is slightly different, I think. Go ahead.
I think the electric company uses this tool too.
Yeah, the electricity shut off, yeah.
Their power shut off, so it is, you know, it's harder services. I think it's a good tool for the township to have, and they're showing you.
I think we discussed, the only thing that you can't turn off is trash and that's because of health issue.
Yeah, we can't turn off sewer, right?
Trash.
The only, the only way you could actually cut off the actual ability to use your sewer short of shutting water would be basically to put a balloon in the lateral and that would cause a huge backup and a mess and no one wants to go in there.
The other issue that I see, I know an individual who is on the list and they have a pool. So we're subsidizing him to have a pool. That doesn't seem fair to me. They're using the water to fill the pool.
That's fine, I'm glad to hear it. I mean, there are some quote-unquote bad actors who probably have the ability to pay these bills. I don't think that's disputed. I just think that it's unnecessary, seeing as we already have legal tools to deal with this issue and you don't necessarily know what's going on in people's lives. I mean, trying to be kind of more human about this maybe than I should, I don't know. It just seems inherently excessive.
The answer to that, Ashlyn, is, is, since everything is an individual situation, you could assess whether someone has a real problem paying the bill, what kind of payment work and take into account those factors versus someone who is abusing the ability to pay. And ultimately, if you don't have this tool, you go down the road that Kristen described, it's still a detriment to the individual because they lose money on all the legal fees, all the extra costs of managing that legal process through liens, et cetera. So I think it's, it's good to have the tool and it's, I don't think we're going to use it much, use it once. And I don't know how many cases you had of, of like a payment in Malvern, but.
I can't say it to end currently with one correction. In Malvern, the bill was there was a flat amount that covered the first so many thousand gallons and then there was a rate over that usage. So there was some connection. Washington Township, there was not a connection. It was a flat amount and we used it. And we sent notices out and we used it one time. And then that person, when we went out and we turned it off, that person walked out of their house and said, fine, I'll pay you and came over to the township building and settled a payment.
That's what I think happens.
How, how long of duty did you allow at Malvern, Washington? Three quarters, like we proposed we did, or was. Three quarters, like a proposal, or was it a short, was it a monthly bill, or what you had there?
So we bill quarterly in Malvern, just like here. And I believe it was the third, it was a thirty day period, but it was mostly like, you know, people got excessive. And I can tell you when they instituted, they instituted this before I got there, but I know their delinquencies dropped dramatically. I think we had about, I want to say we had about one percent delinquent, one percent delinquent, I believe, one or two.
Okay. All right, I too knew somebody on those two, it has to be a neighbor. And I know the situation, they went through, went through an illness a couple of years ago, didn't pay it. That was the period they didn't pay your sewer bill. And since hasn't been paying it, but there was a period of time when they're still delinquent. Who would make the decision, would be the board who would make this decision, whether to pull that trigger or not? Is that correct?
Well, now, once you said the policy, then we would follow the policy. However, what I would do is go through the list of delinquencies that we have, look to see like who's on a payment plan, who have we, who have we contacted before and been non-responsive? And I would start with the ones that are like the big, like the big ones who we know we haven't really had much communication with, and start with those individuals and try to get them set up on some type of a payment plan first. The goal isn't to go after the people who owe like five hundred dollars, which there are a couple of them on here. The goal's to go after the people who owe like six or seven thousand dollars and get them to establish some type of payment plan. Now, as Mr. Malvern was saying, there may be extenuating circumstances that we just aren't aware of, because we just haven't had the communication. This may, through using a stick approach, open up the lines of communication to get that information, to be able to establish an appropriate payment plan for them.
So illness, medical disability, maybe loss of employment, for a certain period of time, they would be considered viable and excusable, the reasons for not having the water shut off. Maybe setting, you still should set up a payment plan.
Correct.
But not having the water shut off, at least you wouldn't go down that road.
So would that be in the policy, or would we give it up to our discretion as to what's acceptable and not be okay?
Allow some let it to you.
I definitely think, I mean, this is, this is a legal issue, you always have the right to settle debts in the manner, I mean, I think you should be doing it, you know, with consistent goals and policies.
Right, you would be treating people generally.
Yeah, you'd be treating, yeah. I mean, I think you're doing that now, I really do, I think you're doing that now. And I think as far as, as long as I've been helping with this process, you've never been unreasonable with people that have had life hardships. I mean, that's been my experience. And I've, and I've had a lot of communication with people at a call when I get my letters or my liens. And I say, look, this is one of the best townships to work with on these kinds of debts, but you have to be proactive about it. You have to be realistic, we don't want to set up a payment plan that you can't meet. Don't set yourself up for, you know, for failure, set yourself up for success on what you really can afford, and then let, and then stick to that. So they've, they've been extremely.
And when we've set up these, when we've set, when we've sent notices to individuals to outline these, outline these payment plans, we kind of always started at like eighteen months, but there's been some flexibility there to sort of get the amount down. And then we tell them in the letter like what the payment amount would be per month, and then the state current. So we kind of try to give them an idea of what the break would be.
And our ordinance says here, the township manager, at the request and direction of the board of supervisors, may take action as is necessary. So there's complete flexibility there as to how you, 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 the ordinance, plan the ordinance. Any other questions?
I just think, just to kind of close it, I think the board knows from us working together for the last four years that in these kind of situations, I would certainly come to you and you would sort of work out something together.
Okay.
Would that be handled in a public meeting?
In general, there would be one.
Yeah, no, that's not totally in the public meeting, no.
Okay, well, so are we in a position to see if there's a, somebody willing to make a motion to adopt this ordinance, or is this just something you need to finish up in terms of?
We have to advertise it.
We have to advertise it.
We have to make some adjustments to it also.
Right, in the first paragraph.
Change in the timeline.
Changing the timeline, and you want to put that if requested in on number five.
Yeah. And the other thing is, in the second paragraph, it says the water utility shall issue the written notice. The statute requires written notice, but it doesn't say who gives the notice. And further research, I believe, is the township that gives the notice. So that would, we'll just say, a written notice shall be issued.
So what's the process here? Do you want us to authorize this advertisement tonight, or do you want to finish up and clean this up and bring it back?
It's up to you guys.
Chris, what do you agree with this?
I'm always preferential to having the final version that gets authorized, kind of it'll lean off of everything.
So what are we doing in paragraph one, three quarters?
Three quarters.
Okay.
Okay, so we can revisit this at December second.
I want to, I've drafted it out, it's looking kind of long.
I thought you said it was a pretty small agenda, December second.
Things keep getting added.
I think we should, we've had a good lengthy discussion on it now, it's fresh and online, and I don't think it would take too long to, it's what I said on the second. All right. Stop aside agenda items, so we'll move on now to agenda eight, number eight, discussion possible approval of the 2025 Senior Citizen Trash and Sewer Rebate Program. Chris, would you mind introducing this?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. So this is the annual, 2025, the annual Senior Citizen Trash and Sewer Rebate Program. Our finance department has allocated the individuals that would be able to receive this benefit. I believe there are about seventy-three on the list, and we would send notifications to them accordingly.
Okay, so if the seventy-three, three of trash only, sixty-five is sewer and trash, and what would that be, six is sewer only?
Correct. And they would, they've paid all their bills on time, they've met all the requirements under the, under the program, and so they are eligible to receive that rebate.
How does the number seventy-three compare to previous years?
It's actually, I look back at last year, and it's about, I want to say it's about thirteen less than last year.
Okay. And for the record, can you expand a little bit on what the qualifications are they have to meet?
Let me remember, correct. They have to be eligible to receive a rebate, a rent or property tax rebate from the state. They have to show proof of receiving, that there's a form that's completed, and they turn that form in as part of their application. They have to be sixty-five, I believe they have to be sixty-five or older, or if they are, or if they're a widow, a widow or widow, or have a disability. Those are the two main criteria, and I'll remember the rest. The main one we look for is the rebate received.
Any other questions, Chris? Okay, so if board member willing to make a motion to approve the 2025 Senior Citizen Trash and Sewer Rebate Program. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any public comments or questions? Okay, then we'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye. In the opposition, hearing now the motion passes five zero. Agenda item number nine, discussion impossible award of the bid for the 2019 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor vehicle. So before the board this evening, is consideration to award the bid for the 2019 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor that was authorized for sale. The item was previously authorized to sell by the board, it was included with other items that were awarded at the September second meeting. The original bid amount for this item was four thousand one hundred dollars. Unfortunately, the winning bidder backed out of the purchase due to health reasons. Second highest bidder was contacted, and was no longer interested in the item. The vehicle was re-listed for bid on municipal, bidding opened on October the twenty-eighth and closed on November the thirteenth, the thirteenth. Results were that the winning bid amount was four thousand four hundred and one dollars. Winning bidder was a gentleman in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and the total reward bid received was twenty-seven. So this is more than the original bid amount awarded, and the recommendation is to award it to the winning bidder in the amount of four thousand four hundred and one dollars. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the awarding to the winning bidder, the 2019 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor in the amount of four thousand four hundred and one dollars. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Thank you. Is there any public comment or questions?
I have a quick question for the team. Do you get water mats or floor mats to your vehicles?
I don't think patrol cars do, they have rollouts. But the admin cars probably do.
Can the patrol cars get them? I just noticed the pictures when they go on, you know, it's fifth. The floors are always really worn, molten, and sometimes I've got, we had this one.
Problem is, most of the floor mats have run out, and they just don't break. So if the floor mat slides, it'll get, that's an injury.
Any other questions?
We could get more money if they.
If they, if they look in better shape?
Yeah.
I was surprised you got forty thousand, four thousand four hundred dollars for it, personally, but there you go. Any other questions? All right, let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. We are up to agenda item number ten, which is reports for the month of October. We start with the police report presented by Chief Cal.
Thank you. The report from the police department for October 2025. We've responded to 2,326 calls for service. Forty-five of those were alarms, and four of those alarms were found to be valid. One hundred and fourteen accidents, twenty-nine of which were reportable. And we drove a total of sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight miles. In the area of alarms, only three were of the sixth or seventh violation, where another thirty-three were a first or second violation, which doesn't result in a fine. So a much higher percentage of the first or second violation than repeat offenders. We offered sixteen assists to other departments for a total of seven and a half hours, and we received twenty-five assists from other departments. In the area of continuing education, we did our normal monthly trainings and completed our department, well, we continued our department-wide control tactics training. Detective Cuddy attended itself, our self-right recertification training, which is self investigation. Lieutenant Grandezia continued his Northwestern School Police Staff and Command Training. Detectives Cuddy and May attended a Delaware State homicide conference. Officer O'Brien attended an active shooter training. Myself and Captain Domidio attended the International Association Chief of Police Conference. Lieutenant Cotter attended an officer-involved shooting training in Willamette County. Captain Domidio attended an FBI NA trainer, and Officer Riley attended a patrol legal survival class. That is the report from this department, is there any questions?
Thank you, chief, is there any questions from the board?
The International Chief of Police Conference, the two and Captain Domidio, Lieutenant, what was that about? And where was it?
It was in, where did I go? Denver. It's a, it's a conference, so they offer hundreds, well, not hundreds, but dozens and dozens of different classes. Most of them are around dealership. And they have an expo floor that's open for a couple of days where we can find new products. And that's one of the, budgeted a pretty large amount for replacing our body catering car cameras for next year. We came across a vendor that we are exploring a different product with. They actually came to the station today to give us a demonstration. Waiting on a price in the next week or two, hoping to be able to save some money on that budget.
They have seminars in certain ones that discuss different topics?
Yes. And police from all around the world, so there's usually probably fifteen to twenty thousand people attended. So you talk to people from all over the world about the same exact problems that we have.
Any questions for the chief of, anyone in attendance?
Chief, I just want to thank Lieutenant Cotter, he's been helping me out with this situation, with the alarm situation with property around West Chester Pike, so thank him for all of the help, he's been very helpful.
All right, no, thank you. Is that been resolved yet?
Not entirely, but he is active, but Lieutenant Cotter is actively working on it and keeping me up to date on times.
He's confident?
Yep.
He's confident with the result?
Yes. He's been, he has been, he has been my right hand in dealing with those complaints that we receive. So I thank you, Lieutenant Cotter.
Very good. Anything else with the chief? No, thank you, chief, that's double checking there. All right, so also we have reports from the West Chester Pike Department, Goshen Fire, and GFAC. Is there any questions about those? We obviously have an attendee who wants to speak to us. From Andrew.
Chad. Yes, thank you. Chaz Bergen, the executive director and EMS chief from Goodfellas Amulets. Let me just start by thanking the board, ultimately the residents, for their continued support of the fellowship financially and budget request next year. I know we talked a lot about the skyrocketing costs of providing this service, so thank you for that. West Goshen has been one of the most invested and proactive of all the ten townships that we provide service to, so. On the October report, there were a total of eight hundred eighty-nine responses in our entire coverage area. That is the busiest month we've ever had, mostly due to the increased area in West Whiteland. So specific to West Goshen, your volume is actually trending down year-to-date about five percent, which is good. And that's been a trend for the past couple of years. So while we see most of our municipalities' volumes increasing, West Goshen's actually decreased for the last couple of years, same trend for 2025, so.
Is that both ALS and BLS?
Yeah, that combines both of them, so there's some overlap there with Goshen's volume as well, so.
Even with Greystone?
Even with Greystone, yeah, the volume's trending down, so. So, really, in October too, we had two big events around our college population with Homecoming and Halloween weekend, traditionally very busy weekends for us. There is obviously some split over in the West Goshen. I just want to mention that we have a full-time clinical quality manager. He runs a harm reduction program with the fraternities and sororities. We timed that out with Homecoming, and we're seeing that metro impact, really trying to address signs of alcohol overdose, drug overdose, and what they should do in those situations, so. Just want to mention, he's done a lot of good work. He takes on our Westchester University Division with them, I call them kids, not kids, but our college students with them. So it's really a peer-to-peer education, it's been really successful, so. In October, we also opened our sixth regional station. It was the second station in West Whiteland Township at Boot Road Park, which is at Boot Road, Pox Town Pike. I mention that because there is benefits to the north side of West Goshen. The ambulants there will be from eight AM until midnight every day. And it'll provide service to not only West Whiteland, but the north end of West Goshen, the north end of East Racker as well from that location, so really happy about that. Last but not least, our ATV is fully put in service. That's the EMS capable ATV that can hold an ambulance stretcher to move patients that we can't get an ambulance to. That was put in service, and its first call was actually to the shooting in Lincoln University. So we sent a number of resources to Lincoln, and that was one of them. They looked for some ATVs, and that was its first response. Happy to answer any questions you have, but again, thank you for the support.
Your acquisition of West Whiteland is part of your coverage area. That's obviously putting more strain on your resources. Have you found that there's been any negative impact, or are you still going through a learning period here as far as your response times?
Response times to you, no, because you're primarily serviced by our main station still. If anything, it's going to improve response times in the north end of West Goshen. So they're primarily being serviced by that station now, where it was coming from our main station. So I think there'll be benefits to West Goshen there. On the West Whiteland side, a lot of data collection still. We're still tweaking hours and staffing there as people get in. But their volume's certainly busier than I think everyone anticipated, so.
How's it gone with the substantial increase in fees and your perception of the other municipalities that you have agreements with?
Yeah, it's been a fun few weeks. So I believe we will have a hundred percent buy-in now. The last one was their township meeting last night, they agreed to fund us the amount that they, that we asked for. So I believe we'll have a hundred percent across the board now, which is good.
So how many of them are actually have contracts with, just being a funding?
So we're intending to have all ten of them in contracts, that is the next layer here. You know, the contract that we are proposing for West Goshen replaces is a three-year term, and automatically renew this one year. We have two that would like a one-year term, will automatically renew. I believe both of those townships are considering options for the future of firing messengers.
Okay. Can you share with us who that is? Which of those two?
Uh, not right now, I'll come back, yeah, I'll come back to that.
Okay, then we, as you know, we, I think December the second meeting, we're going to consider the contract. We had, we looked at that language.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of things.
And I'll let the board know that, Ms. Campbell and I did kind of outline some change, the language change that the board requested. Send it to Chad, Chad's incorporated that, you got to turn that around very quickly for us, so.
Yeah, I did want to, we added, if there were any funding for operations and support from Westchester University, we added that to the contributions, we have the assisted livings in there, so we're having some progressive conversations with Westchester University, included that language as well.
Good.
If they were to fund their fair share part of it, that would have done for the townships and that, so. Really, that comes with the question.
And Ms. Smith, to answer your question from the, from the last meeting about if we're currently receiving anything from any assisted living facilities, the answer is no. So we don't receive anything from any assisted living facilities in West Goshen Township currently, but the approval for what's going into the quality and does, I think that is part of the conditional use of approvals.
You can't go back to resourcing from a legal company.
Or you can ask them, say that you can't mandate it.
Have we asked them, or have we, have we asked them?
Have you, have you asked them?
Or have you?
So really, in our BLS side of the township, there really is nothing. Uh, so really, in our BLS side of the township, there really is nothing. Really, it's on the Goshen side, in West Goshen. We have in other townships, and they've not had any interest, so.
How are they there, huh?
Yeah, so.
Well, ten municipalities that you have had contracts, but how many of those are actually participating, or members of this municipal authority?
Uh, so there are five that are actually participating, so official numbers, five of the ten.
You receive those, yes.
Yep.
Well, you blanked me broke, because, you know, what you're trying to do there with this, so at this point, it's not for us to be perfectly clear. All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number eleven, Board of Supervisors announcements. Start on my right, Ashley.
Uh, well, I just want to begin by thanking the voters of West Goshen Township for entrusting me with another term supervisor. It's a position that I really respect, and that's something I take lightly, so thank you to the West Goshen voters. And then, as far as announcements go, the only thing I feel like I'm coming up that I'm involved with is the Holiday Life Show, which is going to be the Friday after, Monday first.
It's this Friday.
This Friday.
Don't listen to me. I don't want to talk here.
Five to seven.
Thank you, Tino. This Friday, five to seven. Come on out, and it's the first year we're doing this, so please.
Thank you, Ashley. John.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Re-election issues. On Thursday, October the thirtieth, I attended the land planning committee meeting where we discussed, or continued discussion on the proposed zoning districts and uses allowed in each district by right, by conditional use, or by special exception. And specifically, we made adjustments to the manufactured home district to limit the uses that are allowed there. The next step in the zoning ordinance update process will be a presentation to a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, scheduled for Wednesday, January the twenty-eighth.
Excuse me, John. Have we, have we announced that meeting? It's a public meeting, so then we have to.
Well, advertise that we haven't announced it yet on the website or anything.
Don't want to carry.
But that's not on, none, none of the twenty twenty-six.
So you're still with all the other meetings? Okay.
That's correct.
Sorry, John.
At the same end, I attended a listening session on immigrants' rights. The speakers taking questions were Representative Chris Bielly, the one fifty-sixth district, that's been district manager, Kevin Dykes, of the Chester County Sheriff. On Monday, November the tenth, I attended a hearing before Judge Fairway, the Chester County Court of Honor pleads. The hearing was in response to a petition for the conservatorship of the light property nine oh five West Town Road. This appointment of the conservator to bring this property into compliance with the county's ordinances, since it's been ordered by the board. Also, on that, November the tenth, I participated in the conditional use hearing with the reported development of the Kia Delta dealership on West Town Road. On November the twelfth, Wednesday, I participated in the land planning committee meeting to assert a zoning ordinance change to allow a car wash at the old Rite Aid located at the Phoenixville Pike and Boot Road. And also, on November the twelfth, I attended the Planning Commission meeting as a word of last. I'm not too surprised.
Thank you, John. Nate.
Uh, October twenty-third, I attended the historic commission meeting. Nothing new to report there. October twenty-seventh, via Zoom, I attended the America Two Fifty Greater Chester County meeting, discussed upcoming events, and I'll go into that a little bit later. November sixth, I attended the ribbon cutting for Set the Stage, a new business, the bought with staging homes for sale. November tenth, I attended the nine oh five conservatorship hearing, and then November eighteenth, I attended the America Two Fifty joint meeting with East Goshen. As far as America Two Fifty is concerned, on January twenty-seven, twenty-second, we're going to have a speaker here, Michael Paris, who is an author, that will be at seven o'clock and will be at the township building. Early April, there's going to be blacksmithing in early times. That's going to be limited to about thirty people, and will be at the East Goshen Blacksmith Shop. Goshen Go Two Fifty is going to be taking place on May thirtieth. Already booked is the Reese Band and Chester Concert Band. There's going to be various re-enactment units also available. Spy Camp is going to take place from June two through August. Forty kids will be able to attend. And then, November twelfth, here, will be another author, Tom McGuire, giving a lecture on Revolution, the Revolution One-on-One.
Are we going to put all that on our website at the appropriate time, when it's formally locked in and everything? So we'll have a belief for people to access that list, will it?
Everything will be on there.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Tina.
A few things. October twenty-fourth, I attended the West Goshen Police Trump Retreat. It was a very successful, fun night. Great job done. Very creative stuff, too. October twenty-seventh, I went to the Legacy Celebration, which is the Chester County Community Foundation, um, at Uptown, their thirty-seventh annual meeting. They, DeBaptiste was there. On the thirtieth of October, we had ISTEM meeting, eleven-six, I attended ribbon cutting for our new business at the stage in West Goshen. The ninth, there was a fundraiser for the food cupboard to eradicate hunger in Exton. Then I went to, the tenth, we're going to have emergency responder seminar with West Whiteland Township, I went to, that was put on by, by PSATS. On the fourteenth, Senior Center had a fundraiser in Downingtown. Dick Romel was there, which was really nice. It's a great fundraiser. They made a lot of money for that. On the twentieth, we're going to be having our COG meeting, which we're going to be doing a pipeline exercise. There's two incidents that we're going to go over. And on the twentieth, I'll be doing another Chester County Business and Industry Speaker Series. That's it.
Thank you, Tina. The board met in executive session on October the twenty-fourth to meet with the township manager and review progress against his performance objectives for the year. Also, October the twenty-fourth, we met with Chief Carroll and Captain D'Amato to discuss a police department legal matter, and on November the eighteenth, just before this meeting, we also met with Chief Carroll, the township manager, and the solicitor to discuss a legal matter. I attended the pension committee meeting on October the twenty-second. I also was able to attend the November tenth hearing on the conservatorship petition in front of Judge Fairway, which was very interesting. All right, moving on to, oh, is there any one other question for the board? Okay, next is township manager's announcements.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so the township offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on November twenty-seventh and November twenty-eighth, and trash and bulk trash collection scheduled for Thursday that week will be moved to November twenty-eighth, although the information posted on the township website. The township's monthly newsletter will be issued on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, for the month of November. As discussed in the November sixth meeting, the information related to the conservatorship petition for nine oh five West Town Road has been posted on the township website. We posted both the petition and the order that was issued by Judge Fairway, and as more information becomes available, we will update that accordingly. We've also set it up so that people can sign up to receive alerts when new information is posted, and I believe it will come up in Lincoln RSS.
Do you have the date for that, that you said for the final plan, three percent on these in March?
I want to say it's March sixth, I believe, twenty twenty-six.
Could you still do it?
It is. It's in, it's in the order. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. In terms of projects that are under, that are under construction, as Mr. Hellman mentioned, there was a land planning committee meeting, or projects in flight, there was a land planning committee meeting for the potential redevelopment of thirteen oh seven Phoenixville Pike, which is the former Rite Aid. That will be before the board, probably the January fifth organizational meeting to consider amending the zoning ordinance. One question that came up during the land planning committee was how this impacts the zoning ordinance update that is up to date. We did kind of reference that, and there would be no impact on the zoning ordinance update. The Rosedale Avenue sidewalk project commenced construction on October seventeenth. Substantial completion under the existing contract is November twenty-eighth. However, there has been a certain level of needing schedules to be adhered to to make sure that we meet that date. If you driven by the project area, there's been limited activity. We did send a letter today to the contractor indicating that we expect, that we expect the schedule to be adhered to. And I'm growing pessimistic that they're going to meet that November twenty-eighth deadline because they cannot work on Sundays or Thanksgiving, so they are coming up with it. I don't know what really occurred. One of the issues was, Brian, correct if I'm wrong, but the cross slope on the one section was out of compliance, and that needed to be replaced. So they, if you drove by there, there was a section of sidewalk, and that has since been removed and needs to be replaced because the cross slope didn't meet the requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that is not being replaced on the township's expense. They are, they are replacing that at their own expense.
Supposed to have been like a two-week project, once they got started?
This was supposed to be a two-week project.
They were a little bit.
Yeah. This is proving. Substantially low, which makes you wonder.
This is, this is proving to be a little bit more difficult, but the township solicitor did review the letter that went out, and that went out early today to the contractor. And they had outlined the schedule, but I don't know if they're going to adhere to it. In terms of the Westchester University master plan, the township has received an extension through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. I actually have a call tomorrow with the borough, as well as the attorney for the applicant, sort of outlining, outlining here in the schedule, so we'll be able to kind of outline here, get a potential outline of a year in schedule for that after tomorrow's meeting.
Do you have an indication when you're going to get an update from the university on the master plan?
The, the updated information.
Yeah, regarding the parking garage or college arms situation.
College arms is off the table until February. They've, they've.
It's being made outside of the master plan process?
Well, the, they had, yeah, they submitted an application to amend the ordinance outside of the master plan, and because they didn't feel they'd been included in until it was resumed, and it was not, it had a lot of pushback from a lot of the community, and given that there were three new council members taking office in January, we encouraged, strongly encouraged the university to withdraw it for right now and very vacate it right now.
Okay, we're about, we're about the parking garage. I have a couple of emails received on whether that's in or out.
As far as I am aware, that's going to be removed, and we're waiting for updated information. I don't have a date for when we're going to receive that. I'm hoping to get that tomorrow, I'm hoping to learn that tomorrow.
Okay.
But we are going to get updated information. When we did get an update from urban engineers regarding their review of the plan, everything is on schedule.
Okay. I'll let you close your church treats. They're not putting the parking garage in here, is that going to be still something that they're?
They're still going to pursue that, but that's ultimately a policy decision for council, and I explained to the planner, there was a lot of history behind that. She wasn't aware of that, obviously, so I filled her in on a couple of the historical issues and conversations that, that occurred through the borough on that.
So they're going to still pursue that church?
They're going, they're going to, the university wants to do that. It's a critical part of their master plan, but that's ultimately a policy decision for council, mate.
Okay. But we have an extension to commence the hearings through the end of February, and I anticipate that the borough will, will commence their hearings before us, just because the more impactful projects are within the borough's jurisdiction.
Do you have the council?
I don't, I don't have that because of three new council members. I just think the three new council members, there's a lot of learning, and the college arms, where that fits into it all, might play a, in my sense.
I'm hoping to learn more tomorrow, or I found a call. But our review is on schedule.
Okay. So in terms of that, you're expecting the preliminary comments from urban engineers to receive mid-December or?
Uh, mid, I believe, yeah, mid-December. We're anticipating.
Final, late January kind of thing?
Mid-January.
Mid-January, okay.
Yeah, I think it was, Brian, it was sixty days from our kickoff meeting for the draft, and then ninety from five.
Okay, so mid-December, January. Thank you.
In terms of the park recreation and open space plan, we received the draft on October thirteenth. Ken Lear, myself, and Mark Gallon from Chester County all reviewed the plan, and then we met with Han Tool yesterday to review it. The general consensus is the plan document is extremely thorough, well-done, and will definitely serve the needs for the township. There were some changes that Ken and I recommended to, and primarily, I want to make sure a lot of the comments from the SAC were captured appropriately, so those are being updated, and I hope to have the final draft by the end of this week that I will then circulate to the steering committee to begin their review on. So I'm hoping to have this in front of the board to get advertised for public comment in the first part of twenty twenty-six. So that is wrapping up. The comp, the response from the county was overwhelmingly positive.
Okay, I forgot to mention this during the presentation, but we did, you and Ken did discuss, you know, this low-hanging proof for improvements that need a little bit of money in twenty-six. We would, we have six hundred thousand dollars in general park improvements. Right now, it's kind of outlined as being for playground equipment at a couple of parks, but within that general overall approach, we could look at potentially whatever comes from this report, maybe priority to the board over one of those. I'm not saying it will be, but it could be.
That's correct.
Okay, then.
In terms of the solar energy array, all the outstanding items related to the solar energy array have been addressed. We processed the final invoice for TerraSol, and I also received the final invoice from Keystone Engineering Group for, for their engineering services earlier this week. We processed that, and that, I got the numbers reversed when I spoke earlier. The engineering is going to be thirty-one thousand dollars less than what was approved by the board.
Could you, can you send me those specific numbers so I can reply to Sal with the latest?
Absolutely.
Final, this is a case topic.
The fin, I will send you the numbers, the final numbers for engineering, for the construction oversight phase, but I'll have to look back at the design phase of it, were about fourteen thousand dollars, and then the final cost for the actual construction was four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, there were no change orders for the project.
Thank you.
And then with the issue that we, we experienced with direct energy, they are issuing us a refund for the costs that should not have been billed to us by, by them for an amount of five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, so I did receive an email from them about that last week.
But that's not specific to the soul, that's just because they did transfer the account?
Correct. I'm still working with PICA about the credits for the solar to offset our, to offset our energy.
Okay, so we're in the process of collecting three-month data.
Correct. I actually, I, I asked, I asked Mike today if he's able to, I know we didn't have access to the program, but I did ask Mike to check to see if he can go back, to see if there's any data from earlier before we had the program, so that we can submit sooner rather than later, so he's looking into that. And then finally, with the North Hill Storm, with the community park, two final things with the community park projects, we opened bids today for the, for the family bathroom expansion. I haven't had a chance to review those, but the notice of intent to award will be in front of the board on December second, with potentially for final award at the December sixteenth meeting, and the North Hill project should be completed this week minus like final restoration and everything.
Which will be in the spring?
Which will be in the spring. We have, we've processed two payment applications on that project.
They're going to do what they can to stabilize it, but it's supposed to be back in the spring to finish it.
Yeah. Great. I could, Chris, any questions for, to log in?
Could you talk to me about the January, the reorganization meeting and why the applicant for the rezoning, the car wash is coming to that meeting? What's the purpose of that?
Well, typically, those individuals who present the land planning committee then come in front of the board of supervisors, and the board makes the determination whether or not to authorize the solicitor to prepare ordinance. The board has handled business in front of the township at the organizational meeting at least the last three years, I believe, like development applications, conditional use approvals.
Why isn't it going to the planning commission?
It comes before the board first, authorize the solicitor to prepare the ordinance, and then it goes to the planning commission to review as required by the municipality's planning code.
It just seems like there's a whole lot of interest in this application. But there's a lot of interest, and I know the thought is now that the zoning requests that they're seeking, they won't need to seek that amendment if the new zoning ordinance passes. I just think that it would be more to wait until after that zoning, or that meeting at the end of January, to hear what the citizens might have to say about rezoning the whole township before, I think it's just a part of the course.
That's a policy decision for the Board.
You're going to be here with Chad or with Margie?
Not the organizational meeting, but I'm hearing.
Like you said, it's written comments about agenda items.
I won't, but a lot of people will, I believe.
Great, encourage them to do so. Anything else, Chris?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of quick questions, historical ordinance, where we're at with that was a meeting with the residents, have we set a date for that yet?
We have not set a date for that. I, I think it would be, because we had a lot of things coming up in the first part of 2026, I think it would kind of behoove us to sort of map out everything, so that we're not cramming a lot of stuff into a short period of time.
Do you think sometime, what, January, February?
I think I'm hearing March already.
February or March.
I mean, it's just, we've been working this stuff for over two years, you know, it's taken so long.
I want to just kind of outline everything that we have, because we know we have hearings coming up, we know we have the zoning ordinance coming up, I kind of just want to make sure we outline everything appropriately.
I hear, I'm a kind of, you know, this West Chester University Master Plan, I hear there's a lot of moving parts, that's what I'm hearing, I'm not sure we're going to end up with a very clear direction for your meeting tomorrow, or whatever else, so you should try to lay this out and make your commitment, and we'll move forward with it.
Because it's really, that's where we have to go, we need, we need this thing in place. Another question, and while we're developing, the HOP, the highway occupancy program process, we're pending, have any idea, and instead, something?
I believe Brian does.
You're, we, we do know your township engine is?
I can report it, Margie.
What are you doing?
He's, I've been copying on things, but Brian's been more intimately involved than that.
All right, so I think we've done with Chris, unless there's anyone else with a question for it? Okay, Brian, you're up, engine days announcements.
I had two, now I have three hours. First, by the way, their traffic consultant is still working with PennDOT and our traffic consultant on the concept plan for the changes that were discussed for high street and intersection. There were some changes that were discussed about the lane widths, the through lane, the turn lane, the configuration of the ramp, and they haven't come up with a complete sketch yet, but PennDOT has accepted to even move forward with the HOP process. The HOP is still working on the actual scoping of the intersection. They have actually scoped out a design that they can actually engineer to engineer out the roadway now.
Is there any consideration on rearranging the all three, Southbound All Grand?
That's still, that's still a process, that's still in, being discussed. There is no discussion about physical realignment, it's more of striping, and if they can come up with something, that's what they're currently working through.
Do you have any idea of the timeline to resolve this HOP process?
No. Everything's been, they haven't even come up with a design yet to submit, an actual engineer, they're still working on the layout of the intersection and the road that PennDOT will sign off with, they can go in and engineer, come up with the actual construction plans, and pledge for review for the HOP for that. So I cannot give you a timeline, I don't know. But it's still, it's still completely in the HOP process. All right. So I have two things to report tonight. One, the project for the Quality Inn redevelopment, they started site work on November 5th, so it's finally moving forward with the site work. I do know that as of the same afternoon at 4:30, when I last checked, they still have not paid for or picked up a building permit that was approved in June, so they can only go so far before they, they have to stop. I don't know how far it's going down.
Any idea why it stopped? They tore the building down, but then that was it, it just?
My understanding is there was a lot of changes made and a lot of work done on the system of the living facility for the design. And that permit was approved in June, and I think it's been sitting because of the cost. And once they built permits, over $300,000, so they haven't paid for it, because.
I also, I also believe that developers waiting to close on financing, that's part of it.
It's the same about the, also work on other projects.
And then I have one more thing to report tonight, and it is, I prepared this so it's easier to show it than just completely explain it, but all the areas you see on the screen in yellow, in gray stuff, which are phases 2, 4, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and age restricted, and the singles, and then twins were paved with their top coat, that paving was completed on November the 7th, so that will be sitting throughout the winter, and then there'll be another inspection performed prior to dedication. But we're still on target to whenever they request a punch list for Aram Avenue, then Aram will have a punch list performed, which they have not requested yet. And once Aram is done, Phase 6 is completed in this area, and the rest of Phases 5 and 6 up here in the age restricted. The areas, this area is Phase 1, this is, this is already A, which is Phillips Lane, and all this area of the age restricted, the twins, and then the Townsend Ward, which is made prior to this year. So they'll all be, anything to be dedicated, the township will have a dedication inspection, a punch list generated, or anything to be repaired prior to dedication. Last thing I have, which is also, the 504 South Parker Road, which is where the old BSA was, they completed their ASBIL survey, so they're, I'm waiting on their dedication deed, transcription so I can verify that needs that, and I'm working with Kristen, or getting a pre-dedication prepared before you dedicate that route. So I expect that to happen probably in the next two or three months.
Okay.
Are we on, what's the timeline for the dedication of the park at this point?
I've heard from the HOA that, that the developer has told the HOA it will be offered to the township until next fall.
Before?
Right, but sounds late at night, boy. Boy, if they were going to get these roads done, yeah, I remember your punch list ready, why would it have a problem at that point?
I can't answer the question, that's what was passed to me from the HOA. That's what the developer has told the HOA, I've heard that from more than one person. So I can't, the developer's not told me that.
So TPD?
TPD.
Are there any outstanding punch list items for the park at this point?
I issued a punch list at the beginning of August, and I heard that the developer was very upset with doing that, because he says, I was very dedicated, I didn't give them a punch list, well, that's the ideal punch list. If you're dedicated, make sure it's, it's already dedicated, if there's issues that we can fix, should fix it before we take it. So I don't know what's going on.
So there's been no follow-up by the developer on that punch list?
Nope. I've not received a response to that.
Chris, so we've got a certain timeline to follow, we're asked to provide the punch list, correct, it's a requirement that we get the punch list done in a certain period of time?
No, you're talking about when we inspect improvements, this is different, there's no timeframe for it.
So, you know, now it's like wasted Brian's time tonight.
Well, they pay for it.
Are they paying for it?
Yeah.
They don't pay for mine, they pay for Carol's. They don't pay for mine, it's not.
You pay for Carol, then you get a reverse.
Carol gets, Carol does the request, what they submit.
Who'd have Carol do if you reversed?
Carol, Carol does give me a punch list of what they see, and I also do my own, just to make sure, because I know it's going to be dedicated, I will go my own punch.
All right, fair enough. So I heard that the stake is sold this month, so we're, we're above the poll, $6.5 million.
Did their lawyer call me and ask me, told me that they are going to pursue it, did I know of anything that had changed? And I said that it?
Well, they, we amended the zoning for that to accommodate that particular, 905 for a year and a half, I guess financing, but now it seems to move forward. So it's still the same concept that they were looking at, or at least luxury hotel that?
I think you'll see that come through.
All right. So, Barm Restaurant?
It's Barm Restaurant.
Oh, whatever, okay. Any, any other questions for Brian? Margie?
I guess more for the board, are we going to make sure we have the developer assess that $8,000, $1,000 before we accept dedication for the park? We're going to make sure we have that money in hand?
I'm going to look at staff and Chris, and then if they do the process in terms of the sequence of events for that.
So they're required to make that payment at the time of dedication.
There you go.
So, have it on the same day?
Yeah, they're required to make that at the time of dedication.
You think they're not going to pay it, Margie? You worried they're not going to pay?
Yeah, yeah.
It was included, it was outlined in their bond financing from the redevelopment authority. It's a specific line item in there, $832,000 for the Martin Downman Fund, and then just over $1 million for.
Okay, any other questions?
Produced over $200,000 from.
I'm just curious with the, the estate that was just purchased, so, because they already have the zoning for what they want to build, what likely to happen next, they have?
I believe, yeah, it's a conditional use. So they're going to have to go through the conditional use process in front of, in front of the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors, that's what it was.
And that could be anytime, next year, next month?
Yeah, we haven't received any kind of an application for that.
And then on this, I saw a, a large sale on Grove Road, do you have, I saw that on Deep Records, it was, the transfer tax we received on it was very high, like?
On Grove?
Grove, yeah.
Or Castle Grove?
Maybe just email Chris or Christine and?
Yeah, we got a really large amount on transfer tax.
What, what date?
Pardon me?
What date?
It was in November sometime.
Maybe it's got confused, it's real business property, that's where it would have come from.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Where are we up to, Brian? Thank you, Brian, but Chris, you're the zoning officer this evening, right?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to handle the zoning officer's announcements, and they're very brief. So the zoning hearing board application that was submitted by Crescent LLC for the property at 310 Curtland Avenue, this was the one for the sound attenuation wall that was discussed at the October 21st meeting. This was, this was continued to January 26th, in 2026. The township will be sending new notices to the affected property owners in early January, particularly since the case was originally scheduled to be heard by the zoning hearing board on October 27th. So just as a reminder, it seeks a variance from Section 8447 Geofезoning Ordinance covering fences, and Section 8412 D1 governing accessory uses in the R3 district, and this is for the noise reduction screen along the property line adjacent to Route 100. But that'll be at the end of January.
Okay. That's it?
And there is going to be a presentation in front of the Board at the December 2nd meeting for a, for an application on Fairview Drive, it'll be in front of the zoning hearing board in December, it was reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting in November.
Okay. Any questions for Chris on zoning issues? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number 15, which is approval of the Board of Supervisors' meeting minutes for October the 21st. I provided some typo corrections and one content change, Chris, which I'll read in a minute. Did any of the board members have any typo corrections?
They did.
You provided a correction?
Yeah. Was there a typo on this, Brian?
Yeah, I was there. I'm not supposed to, the top is being defended?
I apologize, I will make sure that that is corrected.
All right.
Apologize for that.
Yeah, a couple, two, I'll just send it to you in the email.
The one I do want to read out is, because it is, it'll, does change the intent of what was stated here, so it's on page 2, third paragraph from the bottom. Mr. Ula stated that it is his understanding that the nature of the contamination, the materials that are found, it may be deep in the soil, should be, the materials that are found in the deeper groundwater on the site, recommends that all excavator materials stay on the site, so the contamination's in the groundwater, not specifically in soil, as with the original draft.
I've made, I've made all of the, I've made all the corrections that were, that were sent today.
Or if we put subsurface environmental issues, then that doesn't come with the groundwater issues?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, we don't know the soil's contaminated with anything, so I prefer, the discussion wasn't just about the fact that it's deep, because of groundwater fluid that we now have some chemical contamination, so I think it's, that's the correction I gave to Chris. All right, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 21st, the corrections as noted, is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Tina. Any public comments or questions? Margie?
I was still back to the last, on the Grove Road thing, it was in Christine's in the budget report, but it says large commercial sales slash change in ownership in 2025, Grove Road, sale price was $5 million.
I don't know what that is. Well, they're really near that, someone's overpaid for something, I think. Okay, we have a motion, any question, any comments or questions on the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Here, now the motion passes 4-0, because Ashley has to abstain, aye. Okay, then last on the agenda is the approval of the treasurer's report and the bills to be paid, dated October 31st, for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and those bills to be paid, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, mate. Any comments or questions on the bills list? Okay, and we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes 5-0. Our motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:06, is there a second? Thank you, Ashley. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone.